Ms. Kelly, Ms. Jacobson, Ms. Carnsey, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Asa, Mrs. Maximinelli, Mr. Peterson, Ms. Kelly, and we are joined tonight by our moderator, Mr. Chris DeWitt, who is a member of the Board of Finance. Thank you. I ask you all please rise for the pledge. Mr. DeWitt, will you do the honor of leaving us from the pledge, please?
Absolutely would.
Welcome and thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight. We're very happy to have this opportunity to host everyone for one of our town hall meetings. The Board typically holds two town hall meetings a year. Due to the pandemic, we were not able to meet last spring. So, we're excited to be here in person with you. Our last town hall was a virtual town hall last November. While I am the chair, I will not be moderating this meeting. Mr. DeWitt has been kind enough to volunteer his services again. He will serve as the moderator. Just a few ground rules for the evening. We will not be taking, we are discussing the facilities, finances, and programs of the Fairfield Public Schools. If you would like to give comment, you come up to the microphone. Please give your, write your name and your address on the pad that is there. If you're a teacher, just write your name and the school that you attend. We will give three minutes for you to give your comment. If you have a question for the Board, in this format, there is an ability for a reciprocal dialogue. So, if you have any questions, Board members are free to raise their hand and give comment. And that exchange will take about 10 minutes. And then, we'll move on to the next person that would like to give comment. Mr. DeWitt is going to moderate, so I can participate in the conversation as just a member of the Board. And with that, I will yield the floor to Mr. DeWitt.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Vitale. Make sure I can see everyone when your hands go up. Thank you for coming tonight. It's a good, nice crowd. We should have no trouble with our three minutes of comment and time with the Board to respond. So, again, you'll come to the podium, state your name. My goals for tonight, very simple. I want to give everyone an opportunity to speak, an opportunity to comment. And I want to give everyone on the Board an opportunity to speak and have a dialogue with you. And that's the reason that I'm moderating, so that Ms. Vitale can take the administrative duties and pass them on to me for at least a couple hours in this, in this year, right? I, we should share as many conversations as possible. Again, you know, the Board is that your beck and call here for tonight to comment and question. And again, I'll help facilitate that. If the conversations go a little too long, I might ask you to stop. But we'll, we'll keep the meeting moving. We will try, we're gonna give, again, three minutes, then comments, and see how it goes. So, start queuing up. Who would like to be first? All right. Come on down, sir. Please state your name. Oh, and once you comment, then the Board will raise their hand. I'll call on the Board members to respond.
Okay. Can you let me know when my three minutes starts?
Starts.
Okay.
After you write your name.
Okay.
I want to test the microphone. Tap it.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Good evening. My name is Kevin Staten. I am a librarian at Fairfield Ward High School. I also serve on the committee that is developing the African-American and Latino Studies course. I'm the co-chair of the Anti-Racism Committee. I am on the Board of Directors at the Connecticut Council for Social Studies and the Connecticut Coalition for the Study of History. I am going to address a couple of statements that have been made in past meetings around the course and concerns, so that I can possibly provide a different perspective, which is the term that I underlined for today, perspective. So, in the, in the earlier meeting on the 30th, I had a statement read in which I talked about how Fairfield has an opportunity to be the gold standard for this course. I have a meeting next week with the superintendent in Westport and the people developing that course, and the people in West Hartford, who are piloting this course this year, and a subsequent meeting in Norwalk. I have also actually taught lessons in New Haven for school districts that are piloting this course this year. And based on my experience, what I've seen is that the work that we are doing, especially in terms of the crosswalk, is exactly the type of work that represents a school district of the caliber of Fairfield Public Schools. In other words, what Fairfield is doing is developing a course that aligns with collegiate, collegiate experience. So, in the same manner, as I stated before, as any elite schools would have this, then would have courses in African-American Women's Studies, LGBTQ. That's what Fairfield is doing, looking to do. Now, I wanted to make sure I addressed two things before my time runs out. First one on 10/12, the lack of fiction that was addressed within the course. A statement like this actually reflects why we should have an African-American history course. Because when one mentions a lack of fiction, you're not taking to account the 246 years that African-Americans were not allowed to read or write. Kind of tough to crank out some romantic fiction or some dystopian fantasies when basically your life is a horror story. So, that shows a perspective that's missing. The second perspective I heard on 11/30 was 30,000 years, why aren't we addressing the 30,000 years of Native American history? And my question to the Board is this. In all of the Board minutes prior to the African-American history course being laid out, where were all the concerns about Native American history and LGBTQ history and Asian-American history before that? All of a sudden, now we're concerned. Has anyone asked that they amend the U.S. history curriculum to reflect all the Native American tribes that were here prior? Has anyone asked to amend the Global Studies curriculum and asked that they include Asian-Americans and other groups? So, that's my question.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Stagen. Anyone from the Board like to comment? I know there wasn't a specific question. Oh, Mr. Peterson.
I'll take a stab at a couple of things. Thank you, thank you for your, thank you for your comments and your perspective. I do want to assure you, at least from my standpoint, I'm devoting a lot of bandwidth to this decision. This is something that I've been taking very seriously. I met with Lisa Oliver earlier this week, the Director of Social Studies, to kind of break down into some of the nitty-gritty and try to alleviate some of my concerns about where I think that there might be gaps in the, in the course, since one of the things we're talking about is if it's supposed to be qualified for U.S. history, credit for the graduation requirement. How broad should it be? She and I discussed a lot of different topics, including issues such as Native American Studies and women's rights and where those would fit into this curriculum. So, to your question about have we asked for those, those changes, I've, I have said on multiple occasions during this debate that I think that we need to take a close look at the U.S. history curriculum, the core U.S. history curriculum as it stands today. I would be happy to take a closer look at that, to incorporate more diverse perspectives. I think that work has begun, but has a lot further to go. So, I'm, I'm absolutely in favor of that moving forward. The point that you make about the lack of fiction in the, in the initial proposal, I think, is well taken. And I, I raised that issue not because I expected there to be a lot of pre-Civil War African-American fiction, but because as a junior-year English requirement, at that point, the course was construed as a multidisciplinary English credit and social studies credit. I felt that the, the literature aspect of that was underdeveloped. It wasn't, it wasn't that I was looking for something that wasn't there. I know there's actually a rich literature in African-American and Latino culture. I, I didn't see that in the initial presentation. I don't know if that actually answers any of your concerns, but that was, that was more where I was going for with that comment.
No, thank you, thank you for your clarification. And I understand your point. Normally, in even a collegiate-level African-American history point, of course, that time period is focused more on narratives. And it's interesting, because James Pennington, who's one of the few people who wrote a narrative and actually conducted Frederick Douglass's wedding, is from Connecticut. His church is in Hartford and also in New Haven. So, I mean, there are all these multiple connections that is all intertwined within the American history narrative. And that's why I said the, the crosswalk, I'm presenting that to the Board of Directors for the Connecticut Council for Social Studies and also with other groups to say, this is the way it should be done. And so, I just don't want Fairfield to, to miss out on a, a golden opportunity to be the vanguard of really what this course should represent throughout the state.
Great. Any other, Ms. Carnsey.
Hi. Just to, well, first of all, I just wanted to say that I 100% fully support enthusiastically this course as a U.S. history credit or to meet their requirement. But just to address the issue of the Board interest or my personal interest in expanding the perspectives that we currently offer, that's one of the reasons that I was compelled to be on this Board. And what I'm hoping is that a course like this will lay the groundwork to expand the coursework across, you know, all the social studies and other subject area curriculums.
I really appreciate that. And one of the things that I'm seeing them run into in other districts is basically they're trying to fly the plane while they're building it. And as opposed to us, where we've actually taken a step back and we said, okay, let's actually put something together and then implement it. So, thank you for that.
Ms. Maximinelli.
Thank you, Kevin. And considering both of the comments you referenced were made by me, and your first point was something that I was critical of, I figure I better jump in on this one. First of all, regarding the collegiate experience, I will say explicitly, I'm not looking for a collegiate experience out of this course. I am thrilled that we're gonna have the Sacred Heart approved option on this. So, that's not what I mean when I say I don't approve of a collegiate experience. But what I'm looking for in this U.S. history course, which is what, a few years back, I advocated for at the policy level when the Fairfield Policy Committee went beyond state statute to require the U.S. history course be a graduation requirement, starting with the class of 2023. It was with an eye towards a survey course to be sure that every student leaving Fairfield Public Schools had had that survey, so that if they never took another U.S. history course, they had had that survey to prepare them as U.S. citizens. And so, I am not looking, and actually, this was one of the points I raised, as a course to then deepen that understanding, I think this is phenomenal. Again, I enthusiastically support this course. I always have. But when I was in college as an English major, I had an American requirement, American literature requirement. I could have fulfilled that by a single course on Mark Twain. I'm not looking for that type of college specialization in a course that's required for all of our students. I want them to have the survey experience. I want them to be prepared with the background knowledge that they can engage in conversations and not be part of the achievement knowledge gap, excuse me, of never having heard of something. Now, our course doesn't begin to cover everything. I think Mr. Asa raised a point, you know, in terms of melding these courses and, okay, he didn't say this part, but possibly lengthening the U.S. history requirement, because we have a rich history with so many perspectives, all of which warrant having a voice and having its time. But to be clear, one, I don't, I do not want the specialization collegiate experience that you advocate for not as fulfilling the U.S. history requirement as an offering of this, of the Fairfield Public Schools, absolutely. Regarding the fiction, I'll just say to you Phyllis Wheatley. The fiction is there. So, I don't want to, I don't want, and I have read James Pennington as well. And it was, it was a great read. But as of the 1900s especially, there is a wealth, and I don't need to say all the authors to you, of African-American fiction writers, none of which were represented in that document, not one. That's what I meant when I said there is no fiction represented here and that English was absolutely the afterthought in that two-credit approach. And I resented that. I want this to be something well thought out. And that wasn't, and obviously, staff agreed in that they have since taken that back. I do hope that as this course gets implemented and as they have more time with it, that there might be something that evolves out of this. You know, we have several specialized courses in the senior year for English, for students taking English. I think this presents a potentially interesting option as well. Finally, to the ongoing concerns that we don't, we have had issues in the past with people here and there taking issue with something in our curriculum and demanding an immediate evaluation of the curriculum. That's not how we operate. Do I think this is important? Yes. And, and those issues that we have raised are things teachers can address now, having their awareness raised of the richness of perspectives and the richness of material to help them support an exploration of those perspectives. That's something that doesn't require Board approval. We approve textbooks. We approve the curriculum. But between, with all of the essential questions and the topics covered, there is some, the staff is empowered now to address many of the deficits that we are increasingly pinpointing in our curriculum. So, to take out of order the social studies curriculum, that's a two-year process. We're going to be getting to it very shortly, and I look forward to that. But to just, to say on, at a moment, let's take a look at that, we need to fix that, that's not the procedure. That's not the, the practice of the Board, because it's not ultimately a thoughtful approach, even as I completely agree with you. I think we all do that it's something that's worth addressing.
Thank you, Ms. Maximinelli. I'd like to stop the topic right now. Listen, I certainly hope.
I was gonna ask, could I respond to that, but?
You, you may. I just wanted to say one thing. I'm certainly, I want to be clear. If anyone else would like to address this topic, it's not just Mr. Stagen. If anyone else would like to address the topic in their comments, you're certainly welcome to do so. I just want to make sure that everyone gets an opportunity to come up here. And it's, it's a fascinating topic. I'm an engineering major, so I don't know anything about this reading and, you know, history stuff. So, if you ask me for a black author's fiction or nonfiction, I'm not your guy. But you seem to be a wonderful representative of the Fairfield School System and the, and the Boards that you're representing, Mr. Stagen. And I, my, my kids just graduated from Ward, and I don't know if they had you or not, but the children of Ward are blessed to have you.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, I'll just take a moment and, and address a couple of the issues. I think in terms of when we, we talk about these courses as specialized, it really gets down to one thing, which is intersectionality. And the crosswalk activity that was given to everyone really showed the fact that this is just an example of one particular group that is intersectionally woven into American society. There's no way you can't discuss this without having to discuss all the aspects of America. As far as kids that have taken courses, they're going to be, they will have already taken American civics, so to become familiar with the law. There's a whole component within that that deals with legislation around ending slavery as well as the civil rights movement. So, that component is there. You're dealing with modern global, where they're dealing with things like imperialism right now, which are things that are also interwoven in society. So, when kids get to this, it's one of those things where it's not like it's a mandatory course, like our civics course. They're not being forced to take African-American history. It's just one of the choices. If you decide to take that, African-American Latinx choice. If you decide to take that choice, that's fine. That's not gonna put a damper. It's just gonna give you another route to the American story. That's all. It's just basically another way of discussing a topic. It would be the same way if we dealt with women's history. You can't discuss the civil rights movement and not discuss patriarchy, toxic masculinity, and misogyny. It's impossible. So, those are things that are going to come up with no way. I did a lesson with the music classes where I did the intersection of women's rights, civil rights, and the Vietnam War, all going on at the same time. This is the kind of work that, it might not be collegiate, but it is preparing our students for the collegiate work. And that's the whole point. And as far as Phyllis Wheatley goes, she's pretty much the only one. Then you go another 200, you know, maybe Frederick Douglass's narrative. So, that's it. And I forgot the, the last point.
I think I'm gonna, I'm gonna cut you off anyway.
Yeah, I think I'll stop, yeah, I'll stop there.
I hope someone else wants to address this topic tonight, so there'll be more discussion.
All right.
Thank you for your time.
Have a good night.
Thank you for your time and your passion. Who would like to come up next, please?
Hi. My name is Elizabeth Schneider. This is my son, TJ Schneider.
Hi.
And we wanted to speak about the Math Academy. And I want to say, first of all, thank you for your time and commitment. And we're not coming with an idea of what the right answer is for the Math Academy, but just to offer a perspective. So, first I'll speak. Is that okay? I wanted to encourage you guys to, as you look at the Math Academy and evaluate whether or not it's something to continue. I've heard that there's some discussion about changing it and putting it back into each of the public schools independently. My experience of this, this particular program has been extraordinary. And my son will tell you about why he thinks it's so extraordinary. But I wanted to suggest, when I do my work, we look at quality initiatives. And we look at it from the perspective of determining what our goal is and then reevaluating, are we meeting the goal? Assessing whether we're meeting a goal, figuring out the timeframe. And then, at the end, saying, okay, how did we achieve success? And in that, looking at it from all the stakeholders. So, not just from the perspective of the students, but also from the teachers and from the parents, and also outcomes. And I'm not sure, maybe you guys have looked at outcomes. I haven't heard about outcomes being measured. And I think it's been out there for such a short amount of time that I'm not sure that there are outcomes yet. But I would really encourage you all, as you think about whether or not to continue this program, to come up with some measures and to say, are the students achieving the measures or the goals that we originally set? How do the teachers that have these students, both now and post-Math Academy, feel that these students are doing? And do they feel it is achieving the goals? And then, do the students and parents feel that? Because from a broader perspective, it's hard for me to wrap my head around whether this program being such, it doesn't seem like an enormous cost for the extraordinary benefit that the students are receiving and the teachers, what they have put into it, is extraordinary. Do you want to say what you want to say?
Sure. To me, the Math Academy means I can challenge myself and think of problems in a completely new way. Also, I can expand my social life like new friends. I really value being able to be among friends that want to learn as much as I do. This past year has been the best school year of my life. I love to have other math-loving kids go to Holland Hill for the same experience I had. And I also love how my teacher integrates math into every subject. For example, once we were doing social studies and my teacher asked us how to calculate how fast a Mayflower went.
Which is, he put the answer in there. In any, in any case, that's why he feels like the Math Academy should be kept open. So, thank you for the time.
Thank you. Oh, let me stop that. Sorry about that. Mr. Peterson.
I'm really interested to know the answer to that question, if you have it.
Yeah, listen, you're, you're talking about math now. Now, I'm interested.
You probably know it off the top of your head.
Kind of.
Kind of. Go ahead. Tell them. It was one point, it was under two.
So, me and my class calculated 1.970328283.
What? Miles per hour?
Yeah.
Miles per hour. Interesting.
Thank you very much.
Boy, that took a long time to get here. That was, that was, that's a long time, at one mile an hour. Would anyone else on the Board like to comment? About the Math Academy, please, Ms. Jacobson.
This is on right, okay. I'm used to having to push the button. Just a quick comment is, in terms of outcomes, I have requested that information as we review this process. So, hopefully, the Board will be looking at that as we move forward. Thank you.
Please.
Thanks for speaking. It's not easy to do. I don't think anybody's denying that the Math Academy for the children who are in it is an amazing experience. It's an amazing experience that I think, you know, children who aren't good in math and who excel in other subjects could easily benefit from a similar setup, if you will. I mean, a lot of the comments that we hear from parents and children who are in it talk about being in a classroom of like-minded students, which on the surface does sound amazing, and it is amazing. And again, if, I have a daughter who is, you know, very, she's very into art. And I'm sure she would love to study, you know, be in a classroom with similar kids who, you know, love art, where the curriculum is geared towards art, the books they read are art-based, like, you know, maybe they're drawing pictures of the Mayflower. I don't know, in social studies, you know, something along those lines. And unfortunately, I don't think we're in a position, or I don't think it's our job, in my personal opinion, to be, to create these individual opportunities, such a specialized setup, if you will, for each learning style. Again, not denying it's a wonderful program. I'm actually a little disappointed that the new proposal, if that's a proposal we wanted to provide to everybody, which has some of its merits as far as more problem-solving, challenging individuals, I don't think, I almost wish that was given as a separate, a completely separate, I don't, I wish it wasn't given, I'm sorry, I'm not being very articulate about this. I wish it was separate from, from the Math Academy decision, because it's not really a substitute. I don't think anyone, I think everybody has agreed it's not gonna replicate what the Math Academy could do. We've all admitted that that can't happen. So, it's a little disappointing that it was kind of presented that way. It should have been too disjoint, in my opinion. But it is what it is. I just, I personally, I've done a lot of, a lot of reading on the Math Academy, the genesis of the Math Academy. And I have yet to find anything that said that it was gonna start as this, you know, fully immersive, that was never, and, and people who have been here longer than me can completely correct me, and I would love to hear more about it. But everything that I've read about it from the very beginning was, the goal was to accelerate math in fourth and fifth grade so that kids could go into seventh-grade math in sixth grade. That was the goal, was, my daughter went from sixth grade to seventh-grade math. She skipped all the stuff that, you know, she's doing fine, knock on wood, in geometry now, in eighth grade. But I feel like that was the goal, was to accelerate the math. So, I would like to focus back on that. I would like to go back and focus on that and see, and see how we can accelerate that math in the home schools for, so you don't have to leave your home schools, you don't have the transportation issues, and so that more kids can do it. So, those are my thoughts on the Math Academy. I know it's a wonderful program. Everybody who's in it loves it. You hate to see your program at that end, you know. I feel like with the outcomes, when we were talking about outcomes, that was another one of my problems. Because at the end of the day, you were gonna get to the same place in middle-school math that you were gonna get, most likely, assuming that they would jump into seventh-grade math. But so, would that have been the success? Was that you were in seventh-grade math? I'm not really sure what outcomes we were trying to measure. So, I just, I have a lot of thoughts about that. But I just, I, I hear everybody when they say that it's a wonderful program. There's no denying that. I just don't think it's accessible to enough kids I just don't think it's accessible to enough kids, and it's not doing what it's originally supposed to do for as many kids as it should, which is accelerating the math curriculum.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Kelly. Anyone else on the board? Ms. Rotelli.
Hi, thank you for coming out. I, I think it's been, it's been great hearing the feedback from the children in the Math Academy. I have never supported the Math Academy from the very beginning, but I understand what it's done for you and your peers, and I appreciate that. You know, my problem with this from the very beginning was that this is, this is something that should have been provided in every school for every child who was able, you know, or who needed it. And that's what I thought we were going to get when we heard back from Mr. Cummings on what they plan on doing with the Math Academy going forward, or bringing it into all the elementary schools. I don't necessarily like the proposal going forward, I don't know that it's appropriate, but my problem with the Math Academy in general is that none of this, this level of embedded instruction is not even available for children who need it to access the curriculum. So if you have a child with a reading disability or a learning disability, that child cannot get this level of all-day embedded instruction anywhere in Fairfield Public Schools. It's not even available, not even in the early literacy academy that's just started this year. That's, that's not even on the same level as the Math Academy. So I have a real problem with kids who need to learn how to read and have those strategies embedded into every single subject to actually learn, that, that's not available, but that this program was put forward to a handful of children for math.
Thank you, Ms. Rotelli. Next question, comment from the audience, please. The bandana-wearing gentleman. Hopefully you're not here to rob us. The gentleman in front did have a, yes, sir, please.
Thank you.
Sure.
I'm just going to put my name down just before I start.
Sure, and what's your name?
My name is Dan Van Horn.
Thank you for coming out, Mr. Van Horn.
My pleasure. All right, so tonight I am here somewhat as a father, but I'm also, I'm a reverend of Trinity Baptist Church here in Fairfield, so I'm the senior pastor, and I'm, I'm coming partially on behalf of my son who's in the Math Academy, but more specifically in shared interest for the upcoming generation of kids that are growing up in our town. My son Max is, as I mentioned, currently in the Math Academy program, and as I understand it, he'll be able to finish out his time in that, in the Academy, which I'm thankful for, so really, I kind of see the words that I want to share with you all tonight as being on behalf of other kids that have opportunities to, to kind of experience what he's experienced in the Math Academy. Before attending the Math Academy, Max was, he was, he was quick to finish his work in school. He'd come home and say that, you know, school is boring, not because he wasn't around amazing teachers and good friends, but he just wasn't, he wasn't being challenged, and obviously I'm, I was not challenging him myself, so. But his teacher was quick to try to find other things for him to do when, when his classmates were finishing things up, and yet this became a place where he grew timid, he kind of went inside of himself, he got quiet, he was afraid to stand out in class, he was afraid to speak up too much, and he didn't want to appear insensitive to his friends who were learning at a different pace than he was. The Math Academy has become an incredible community for him, a place where I think his, not just his ability to learn, but his character has begun to flourish. He has, he's, he's learned that it's not a bad thing to learn at the pace that he learns at, and I think it's been a place where, not just because of the teacher, but being surrounded by peers that, that are kind of having a similar shared interest and focus, has encouraged him as a young individual. I don't believe that this sort of environment would have been available at his home school, because there weren't the sort of, the makeup, it's the community that his experience has become so valuable to his education. He comes home now with a greater confidence, not just in his ability to learn, but as an individual. He's, he speaks up in public with adults, people of his, of his peers, and I attribute a lot of that to the ways he's been challenged and encouraged to grow in community. The Math Academy offers Max a challenging environment with his peers and allows his special needs as a learner to flourish. I do think, you know, whether you're, you're speaking of special needs on one end of the spectrum or the other, they're, they're, no, no child is alike, and, and he needs, he needs special attention to really grow and be challenged. You know, as a, as a pastor of a religious community in Fairfield, I do share in your concern for the well-being of our youth, whether, you know, however you land on this issue, I do recognize that it's coming from a place of concern. But I believe that now more than ever, our children are in significant danger. The Math Academy is one of those invaluable tools we have here in Fairfield to, to help turn the tide of some pretty terrifying and depressing statistics about the, the mental and emotional health of, of our young people. I read an article recently by the United States Surgeon General Vivek Murthy, who, he recently just published a stark warning, and I just want to read a couple of his words. He says, "Mental health challenges in children, adolescents, and young adults are real and widespread. They're unprecedented and uniquely hard to navigate. The effects of COVID-19 on their mental health have been devastating, and the future well-being of our country depends on how we support and invest in the next generation." He goes on, he becomes a little more pointed in his concern, he says, "It would be a tragedy if we beat back one public health crisis only to allow another to grow in its place." He says, "That's why I'm issuing the Surgeon General's advisory. Mental health challenges in children, adolescents, and young adults are real, and they're widespread. But most importantly, they're treatable and often preventable. Our obligation to act is not just medical, it's moral." You know, as a pastor, I've-
Thank you, Mr. Van Horn. No, I appreciate that, the, the passion for the Math Academy has certainly, you know, been conveyed by, you know, the last two speakers. I don't know if anyone else on the board? Ms. Maximin Canelli.
Just a few words, I have been a very ardent supporter of the Math Academy. Once I learned more about it, to Mrs. Kelly's point, it was initially proposed as a means of acceleration, but as the board queried more and more, and along the lines of what are we getting for our money with this investment, that it absolutely expanded to be a much more immersive experience. And what I find to be a shame about the conversation about the Math Academy is, why does pursuing the needs of one subset in our student body mean, why does that have to be set against the needs of another? You know, we have found something amazing for a population, I don't see why that can't be maintained, and then, and while also pursuing that, we have many students with a wide range of needs, with a wide range of gifts, with a wide range of academic talents and personal talents, and because we have found something that works superbly, why should that be a reason to say we need to tear that down because somebody else isn't being served? That, that said, I absolutely respect the points of my fellow board members, but I'm just, I hate the thought of this going away. I absolutely think we have to be concerned about the equity issue, and that ultimately the concern was the acceleration for those students who need access to a curriculum which is currently not being provided to them. A fourth-grade student who needs to be learning sixth-grade math and is being held back by fourth-grade curriculum, which, fourth grade cannot be differentiated to be sixth grade, it just can't, and those students do need to be served. And I recognize the limitations of the Math Academy, and yet honestly, what my real dream would be, would be to maintain the Math Academy with its full immersive experience, and yet find a way to give it as an option, and that's how we'll find out truly if the Math Academy is serving a need not being met, because if we find a way to accelerate in our elementary schools so that students don't have to leave, is there still a demand for this? And if there is, what a wonderful thing to be able to say we do. We're very proud of saying that Fairfield Public Schools has an amazing music program. Well, should we start tearing down some of the aspects of the music program because other electives are not lauded in the same way? I find that the thought absurd, but, so I'll just say that it's, we do have an equity issue with it, we do need to address it, but I am very sad if ultimately the Math Academy does go away, because it, it has been just, everything we've heard about has been wonderful.
Yeah, I mean, just purely from the social, emotional aspect of it, I think it'd be a tragedy if you tore it down. I think that you should consider as a board that you've actually stumbled onto something that, that could hopefully be expanded, because it, I think if you have more students up here, you'd realize it's more than the math, it really is, it's been incredible for their development and their, their progress in the community, of showing how they care for one another as well, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Maximin Canelli. Has any other board members like to make a comment? Ms. Vitale, you're going to have to stick your arm out because I can't see if you're, if you want to say something, please just, I don't want to miss you.
Thank you, Mr. Duett, and thank you for your comments. You know, I struggle with the Math Academy, I think it's a wonderful program, I appreciate everyone who's come out to speak for it, I do share some of the concerns just in terms of access, in that we don't provide transportation to it, I think that if this board wants to move it forward and is committed to moving forward, that we need to look at providing transportation for those students. I hear my fellow board members in terms of wanting metrics. I, I would like to see actually, metrics when they get to middle school, not only in math, but just in terms of making that, that adjustment from being in such a nurturing environment for two years in elementary school, how does that transition to middle school go? I hope it goes well, but when you're with, you know, in such a nurturing environment with a group of children, then middle school's a tough transition, you know, for any child, but then to go from that to a bigger fishbowl, I, I hope it goes well, but I bet it-
I'm terrified just standing in this middle school right now, so I get it, it is, it's a hard transition to make.
So I, I want to look at, you know, the next, follow these kids a little bit longer just to see in terms of their whole development, how this experience plays out.
Yeah, well, can I just say, like, if it's tracking metrics, you can do that pretty well with grades, it's going to be a lot harder when you, when you try to track the intangibles that this next generation needs to have paying, some people paying attention to, which is their social, emotional, relational well-being, and, and that's a real challenge right now. So I, I don't know how you measure those in metrics, but I would certainly, you know, I think it's a great thing to look to and to track, so.
Wonderful, thank you. I think that's it. Thank you, Mr. Van Horn, appreciate your time. Wow, now the hands are going up, okay. I think this, this lady in the back was, had her hand up before. The lights are a little bright, so if I, if I don't call out, if I misidentify you, I apologize. What's your name, please?
Hi, I'm Madeline DiPiano, and I'm a student at Fairfield Budlow High School. I'm a junior.
Okay. Wonderful, thank you.
So like I said, I'm a junior, this year I'm taking AP American Studies. My freshman year I took Honors Global, and then my sophomore year I took Modern Global Honors as well. So to respond to some of the concerns of the board members at this meeting and the last meeting about the African-American, Black, Latino, and Puerto Rican Studies, and the, the concerns were that other perspectives, like Indigenous peoples, are not being taught in that class, but they are not being taught now. I'm, I'm a student at the highest level of history, of US history this year, and the perspective of Native Americans has been thrown in at random throughout our textbook, but the perspective is not being taught, it's added as a footnote to some of the major events that have happened in US history. And to, to say that this course does not deserve to fulfill a US history credit is to say that my history course right now should not count as a US history requirement now. I'm a junior again, I've been in Fairfield Public Schools for almost 12 years now, and the perspective of Indigenous peoples, Black, Latino, Puerto Rican have not been taught. Another concern was that students wouldn't take the class because it is a higher college-level class, but it is not an AP class, so as a student, I think that without the stress of an AP test in May, it will be more accessible to students, and also because of the representation that is not in our normal US history class, students will be more engaged and more willing to challenge themselves in a more challenging course as their US history credit.
All right, wonderful, well, thank you, the, the student perspective on this is, is very important. Would any, from, anyone from the board have any comment, or, you know, there was a lot of comment before. All right, well, thank you for your, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Maximin Canelli.
I, I don't want to leave you, you come all the way up here and get no response, so if no one else is going to step up-
I can ask you questions.
It's, here's one of my issues, that, the, the American Studies course that you reference, Honors US History, AP US History, College Prep US History, it is a black mark against it, it is a point of criticism of it that it leaves perspectives out. That is something we, I mean, you've already heard us say, we believe needs to be addressed better. It's something that needs to be improved in it, and yet there, which is exactly why, how do we support a course for the US history requirement that deliberately, willfully says it is only coming at it from one perspective? And I want to be clear, it should only come at it from those perspectives, that's the whole nature of the course. I am, I don't think it should change that, but if we're saying that it's meant to do that, we can't then turn around and, I, I take that back, we do criticize the current US history, we do believe that it needs improvement, we do expect that the next time that it comes before us, that is something that staff is going to take a year and a half review thoughtful process to address exactly what you have just said. It is also something, I, I would challenge your point that you have not gotten that perspectives in 12 years. We have, elementary school has, is, is doing it more and more, and maybe it's been since you were there, I don't know, but certainly it is part of it now, it is absolutely part of some of the readings and the work of middle school. Everything, look, no teacher finishes a year feeling, I hit everything I wanted to hit. I completely agree with you that it needs to be improved, but to support a course for a survey requirement, which could be the only US history course that that student goes on into life having taken, where it willfully says we are going to ignore other perspectives, that's something I have an issue with. Again, totally support the course, it should have, it has the perspective it should have, and that is deliberately leaving out voices.
All right, thank you, Ms. Maximin Canelli. Ms. Vitale.
Thank you for your comments. It is important to hear from our students, so I thank you for taking the time to join us tonight. I am, I believe that this should count as a US credit, I think that our nation is rich with a lot of different stories, and I think that expecting one class to actually capture every important story in our history will probably be nearly impossible. I don't really think that this is taking one perspective, I think it's taking multiple, multiple perspectives, and does address many key historical events in our history. So I do support it, but I, I appreciate, you know, wanting to make sure that our graduates leave the Fairfield Public Schools getting, hearing as many stories as possible from our history. And in looking through our social studies curriculum, as Mrs. Maximin Canelli noted, it starts in elementary school. I mean, I can remember fifth grade, you know, immigrant experience, eighth grade is a US history survey, in our civics classes, we're getting key aspects of US history, so it's not just one class that students get this experience, they're learning about our history, arguably in, in science, in English, it's just not, not one. So I, I view this as a nice add, and as it's not a requirement, students can elect a course that is of interest to them, so thank you.
Yeah, I agree with that, and that it should all be included, all of my years of school should be included to get the fullest history of our world and, and country, but another one of my concerns is that if we do not make it a, count as a US history credit, and it is a full-year college credit class, students won't take it, because I'm, being a senior next year, I have the opportunity to take it, but why would I take another US history class if it's another US history class, which the class is, because, I mean, I went through and read what each of the curriculum for that is, and it repeats a lot of the events that I have already learned, which makes it a US history class, I think. And so I, I fear that if we don't make it a require, a count as a credit for US history, students won't take it because it is another year, an entire year, and our schedules are already full as it is. I'm a band student, I try to do art as well, and taking Spanish and all my other classes, my schedule is very full, and thinking about my class already, my class is already next year, I don't have enough space to take this class that I would really like to take, and I think that a lot of other students feel the same way as I, that our schedules are already, are already constrained, and we just don't have time to take it if it wouldn't count for a credit.
All right, well, thank you, thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Sir? Up front? And sir, what was your name?
My name is Jim Cutso. I have a son who's a sophomore at Ward.
Great, thank you for being here.
Yeah, I'd like to continue on the gentleman before- before me talked about mental health in schools. And everyone's reading this report from the Surgeon General. Those of you who don't know me, my son was Kevin Cutso, and he took his life on February 4th of 2021. He was a Ward junior. Kevin suffered from depression. And I believe that the COVID lockdowns exasperated his problem. Murthy warned, the Surgeon General warned of the devastating consequences to young people's mental health if the issues continue to go unaddressed. Between 2019 and 2021, ER visits for suicide attempts went up 51% for young girls, 4% for boys. Rates of depression and anxiety doubled during that time. One in four kids report depressive symptoms. One in five with anxiety. When we talk about beating down one, one problem and we've got to have another, the disease, the cure is the disease for mental health in our kids. The, the lockdowns, canceling all activities. Kids want to go to proms. They want to go to sporting events. They're working hard for things. All canceled, no help. Now we're left with the masks. And I can only think about what, how it affects learning and, and talking and speaking. I have a lot of friends here who have young kids. And there's studies out there that show that their developmental, that their development is being curbed by the masks. They're learning how to read. They can't see the teacher phonetically saying the words and so forth. So we need to do something about this. What is the goal? What, where is the endpoint? Does anyone on the board know what the endpoint is for taking masks off for our kids? And I'm going to keep, I, I want you to answer that. Because I looked up on the Connecticut Board, you know, portal dot C data dot CT gov. Thirty two, 31,479 cases of kids from zero to nine. Okay? One death. Every death is tragic, but one death. That's an, that's a point 003 death rate. But no one ever talks about the 99.97 survival ship rate. 10 to 19, 52,651 cases, four deaths. Point 008. 20 to 29, 75,355 deaths, 16. Okay? I can go on. The number gets skewed up when it's 80 and older. 18,809 cases, 39, 32 deaths. Okay? That's 20%. I'm very happy that my, my parents, who are in their 80s, have the vaccine. They need it. The kids in our schools, they don't need masks. They don't, let's start living. When is the, when, when is this over with? And we are a blue state, right? And Florida is a red state. We've gone through way different, I've been in Florida in April. It was like nothing ever happened down there. Okay? I can go through the numbers with you. The percentages are all the same. But at the end of the day, in Connecticut, 432,579 cases, 73,28 deaths. That's a 1.7% death rate. Florida, much higher population. 3.697523 million cases, 61,000 deaths. 1.7 death percent. Two states going, doing very different things, and it's killing 1.7% of the, of their populations. We need to do something. These masks, what, let's make it mask optional. Not, if you, if you're afraid of the virus, that's fine. Okay? Get your vaccination. Wear your mask. But don't let, why are we forcing people to wear something that is contributing to the mental health, declining mental health of our kids? So I would like for the board to answer those questions.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Cutso.
And I want to, does the board? Thank you. Does the board have the power to change it? Or is it Sands? Or is it Mike? Or is it Brenda? Or is it Ned Lamont? So please.
Yes, thank, no, thank you, Mr. Cutso. I'm sorry for your loss, and I appreciate your.
You're the first one on the board that's said that to me. Thank you. Oh, you're not even on the board.
I'm not, um, yes. I'm, I'm just a board of finance guy. But, um, what was I going to say? Yeah, I'm sorry for your loss. But I, I also appreciate your courage for coming out tonight. So thank you. And I will hand it to, to the, the real board and let, let them discuss it. I'll, I'll go to Mr. Asa. Is, we haven't heard from Mr. Asa this evening.
This is my first interaction with you in person, and I would like to give my condolences.
Thank you.
I can't imagine being in your shoes.
I'm up here because I don't want this to happen to anyone else.
And I appreciate that.
It's awful.
I want to answer a couple of your questions because that's what you've asked for. We'll go backwards to answer your question of, does the board have the power today to say, no more masks? That currently.
Or mask optional.
Yes. That currently lies with Governor Lamont through an executive order that some of us agree, some of us don't agree with.
Who agrees with it on the board?
But we'll let, I'll finish and then I'll let other people speak.
We'll, we'll take all, all comments later, please.
That goes into where is the endpoint? You asked specifically. When is it over?
No more COVID cases? We have to live with this. And one death between zero and nine?
Okay, hold on. I'm going to answer your question.
Okay, I'm just saying.
I'm going to, I'm going to answer your question. You got to give me a second.
Yeah.
For me personally, as a parent and as a board member, and someone that works in public health for a living, all along, I have believed we would get to a point where I think we're close to where it now. And for me, it was having a vaccine widely available to all ages from kindergarten and up. Not saying that everyone needs to use it or take it. That's a parental choice. I support that. But having the availability has made differences. We know on case data now, people getting sick, it doesn't keep you from getting COVID, but it statistically is having less severe outcomes for people to get it. They're not going into the hospital. They're not dying for the most part, right? So for me, that was important.
Yeah.
I feel that personally, within the next couple of weeks, anyone who wanted to get their child vaccinated will have had the opportunity. And that extra couple of weeks takes two weeks post-vaccine, second dose, right? So that's what they say is full, full effect is two weeks after the second dose. So for me, the endpoint is near. The endpoint is now.
Is the, is the endpoint going to include, you have to get a vaccination for my kid?
No.
So he has to wear.
In my opinion.
And he'll, if he doesn't have a vaccination, he'll have to wear a mask?
In my opinion, we now have the opportunity to get the kids vaccinated. I chose to get my kids vaccinated. If my neighbors don't want to get their kids vaccinated, it's not going to affect my thinking on this. I think that parents that want to send their kids to school in a mask or get their kids vaccinated should have the option, should have the choice. As a parent of a kindergartner and a third grader, I'm ready to have that option. If I were given that option as a vote today, then I would say, if the governor came to us and said, it's up to the individual towns now, my vote would be to go back to normal. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. And I just, and I want to tell you, and, and I'll be honest with you. My thinking on this has changed. Because in the beginning, I was one of those people that said, our kids are resilient. The masks don't bother them. And I believe that because my kids put it on every day and never complained. But in the last three months, I've seen a shift. I've seen a shift in my children's behavior, in their temperament, and in their overall wellbeing. And I can't say that it's because, it's all because they're wearing a mask. But I do believe it's directly related to this pandemic. And I don't want other kids to have an outcome like you and your family had. And as working for a hospital system and deeply intertwined with pediatric emergency medicine, you are correct. The cases of kids coming in is exponentially grown since the pandemic. But can I sit here as a board member and say, it's because of the masks? Is it because of the plexiglass? It's because of this or that? No. But it's definitely the damn pandemic.
And the cure, the cure for this right now, for this mental health problem, is going to see professionals.
Yes.
Which are what? In very short demand. So let's stop the problem.
So.
Let me, let me.
Let me just finish up here. So to answer your question, when the governor, when his order expires, or if sooner, if he puts it back on us, that is my position, is that the parents make the choice, and anyone who wants to wear it can wear it.
Awesome.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Asa. Ms. Maximinelli?
First, I too. Again, I, you have spoken before, but it was in a forum such that it wasn't give and take. So, I mean, I, I don't think there's anyone on this, on this board who doesn't, you know, whose heart doesn't bleed for you. And again, my, my sincere condolences. To a few of your points. First of all, to me individually, I have now written two individual letters to the state, wrote a board letter to the state dating back to April. I've advocated to our state legislature, to our, the Fairfield delegation. So I'm very much in favor of it being mask optional. And I, I too, you know, I think part of this, we had to have, there was a learning curve to this. I mean, we can't, things that we know definitely now, we did not know.
Yes.
Months before. And some people have been proven more right than others, but obviously many decisions were made at the time that they were. Wanting the best for everybody, that doesn't mean it resulted in the best for everybody. And the one thing, though, that I would want to add in addition is because I read that same article that you are referencing. And I can't help but use this as a point of, you know, a PR moment to, to all parents, that the article that you referenced in talking about the devastating impact of the pandemic focused extensively on social media. And that the pandemic contributing to isolation has pushed more and more students onto social media, if it's possible for them to be more on it than they already were. And that the world of social media is devastating to our children. And unfortunately, that is not something that the schools can do anything about.
It's a factor.
We tell them to put away their, again, but it was the focus of that article then. And I'm so glad you brought, I was hoping someone would bring that up tonight because the topic of mental health is some, because unless you address that, the education we're attempting to offer them is, it's never going to be in the forefront of each of those children's minds that, that is having a struggle at the moment. But the impact of social media is absolutely devastating on so many kids. And that's something that, you know, we as an educational body and our staff are looking to support parents in, but we need parents taking the lead on that. And again, I do believe that the, obviously, it's tied to the pandemic to the great. And again, one factor, absolutely. You know, it's not just one thing. But that pushing students more into isolation and their, their turning to social media has had a devastating impact. And so I did want to just raise that as an additional point. That said, I agree with your point, point wholeheartedly, that I look forward to taking very direct notice. And I, I also want to remind everyone, the board is already aware of this, and those parents who were at the meeting were aware. Our superintendent has already spoken very definitively to the point of mask. The moment that Lamont drops the executive order, Fairfield Public Schools is dropping the mask requirement. He has already spoken to that definitively. So I made him repeat it just to make sure that we had all heard it correctly. But in case you hadn't heard that, I did want to share that.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Maximinelli. Ms. Rotelli?
Hi, and thank you for coming out tonight. And I also offer my sincerest condolences to you and your family. And I want to thank you for taking your time and speaking. I was one of the board members who attended the Will to Live presentation at Ward and just appreciate you speaking to the kids at the high school. I just want to touch on a couple of things. You know, it's been said, when the governor's order expires, that's if.
Right.
His order expires. Because our, you know, some of our state delegation have supported him in continuing this mask mandate on our kids. And also, do we have the power? Not necessarily, but we have the power to advocate to end this. And the superintendent has the power to advocate. So does the state delegation. And I haven't really seen that. It's been incredibly disappointing for me. I have seen this immediately. We all got emails from parents when the schools were shut down. Immediately. Devastating emails from high school parents to kindergarten parents, preschool parents, children with, children with disabilities, not receiving their services, you know, being isolated and separated from their classmates. I, it is unbelievable to me that we have allowed this to go on for as long as it has, has. And I think what needs to happen, hopefully, is to go to mask optional, to make everybody comfortable. And what I am so shocked at is the complete lack of understanding and compassion for those parents who have spoken up about how hard this has been on their children. People can say they support mental health, and they can wear the ribbon or the color or whatever. But at the end of the day, if a parent is standing in front of you telling everybody that their child is struggling and you're continuing to hold that child down, that is not acceptable. Not at all.
Does this, does this board have the power to go mask optional? Or is Governor Lamont's edict, everyone in school has to wear a mask? Because why can I take my kid to Little Pub, go have dinner with a full restaurant? No ask. I mean, it's, it's absolutely stupid to walk into a restaurant with a mask on, walk by everyone, they, you know, blah, blah, blah. I mean, why, why in Fairfield? I mean, the town, the town mask, I think Brenda's, two months ago, whatever, the town mask mandate was over. So what power does Brenda, Brenda doesn't have power with schools? But she has power, I mean, where is it at?
Yeah. Thank you, Ms. Rotelli. Ms. Jacobson and Ms., oh, Ms. Gerber was first? Oh, Ms. Gerber, please.
Yeah. We did meet when we were at the Ward event.[1656.89]
Yeah, we did meet when we were at the Ward event, so, and again, I'm very sorry for your loss.
I'm trying, I'm trying, I'm trying to get the message out there. I'm trying to help kids, but we're just exacerbating the problem.
I understand your frustration and anger and upset at this. I don't think anyone at this table is pro-mask. I think that there is a mix of opinions about the importance of masks. I think at the end of the day, though, it is important to remember that for the schools, and it's the schools, that the governor has put the mask mandate on, that is not within our purview. We, and Fairfield is not an outlier. I mean, to the best of my knowledge.
Oh, I, I was going to sue the school system, and you're not outlier, so.
Every, every school district in our state, and many school districts in other states, have mask mandates.
I know that.
So, I.
What would Governor Lamont do if Fairfield just said, "We're not doing it anymore"? I don't see. What would he do? What would happen?
I don't.
Is there money involved? Or what, what would happen? If we just said, you know, we've looked at this, everyone on the board, they're not pro-mask, let's just end it. What's going to happen? There's, there's people looting Macy's, hundreds of people looting Macy's. Why can't our kids just go to school without a mask on? If we want them to? If you want, I'm serious. What would happen?
I, I don't know what would happen, to be quite honest with you, but I do know that this board, we are agents of the state, we follow what the state has mandated, and that is what this board has chosen to do. Again, if, when the mandate ends, there will no longer be a mask mandate in Fairfield Public Schools.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Gerber. Ms. Jacobson, did you still, did you have a comment?
I just wanted to clarify which, about the authority piece of this, and yes, it's through an executive order, but it's also the executive order delegates that authority for decision-making to the commissioner of the Department of Public Health.
Right, so SADS.
So, no, the commissioner.
The commissioner, okay.
The state commissioner. I mean, obviously, I think that Mr. Cummings and the board, you know, collaborate with the Health Department, just like the town side did on several things throughout this pandemic as well. Obviously, things aren't done in consultation with the Health Department, but I'm talking about the commissioner of public health is the one who writes the masks requirement. And that was under or through executive order nine, then 13, 14, et cetera, right? So, that authority is really delegated to her at this point, which lasts through February 15th, I believe, is the date at this point, unless it gets extended again, which could happen.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Jacobson. Mr. Cutso, would you like to have a final comment?
I mean, one, I would like to see that, you know, you said no one on this board is, you know, pro-mask. I would like to see that if, if you were, if you were able to send our kids to school tomorrow, mask optional, who would be up for that on the board? Okay?
Wait, what did you say?
If, if you had the power to say mask optional tomorrow, who would do it?
I think, I think Mr. Cutso is looking for a.
Yeah, that's fine.
A hand vote.
Yeah.
A state of the.
And listen, it's taken a lot for me to get up here, and I don't mean to be combative. I would certainly love to help you, whoever wants to get in front of Lamont, I can help do that, so.
I think the board appreciates that. Ms. Vitale, would you like to have the final comment?
I do, thank you. And we met at the Ward presentation also, and I am incredibly sorry for your loss and cannot.
I did five presentations that day, so I'm sorry.
And, no, no, and I understand, you know, that, I'm not expecting to remember that, and I am, your story and your son's story has weighed on me, the story of really all of our children and their mental health. And, you know, I read the article that Ms. Maxum Cunnelli referenced, and I think that this pandemic, without a doubt, has affected all of us. It has affected our children, and each story is different. So, I wait, you know, lay awake at night thinking about what is the best thing to do for our district. And number one, I agree with you, keeping them in school, engaged with their, with their friends.
Activity.
With their teachers, trying to bring back a sense of normalcy this year. And while we're not there yet, it brings me great happiness to see fall sports back, to see concerts happening, to see dances happening, and I hope that continues. You know, I'm wearing a mask today, really, not for my own fear, it's not that I'm afraid of myself, but I've, you know, was traveling, I was in the city this weekend, and I appreciate that I'm sitting next to other people. I think that it is a mitigation strategy, and I would hate to be responsible for my actions potentially causing somebody else to get sick or causing their children to get sick. So, I'm very much along the same lines with Mr. Asa. For me, access to the vaccination for really all of our students was a point that we needed to get to. You know, I'm really, I'm hoping, I was truly hoping that our positivity rate in this state would be a lot lower at this point. I'm hoping that it goes back down again, and that when the governor makes the call to remove the masks, that we will remove the masks. Nobody wants them, we appreciate, you know, the, nobody likes them. We appreciate, you know.
And the people that do, that's great, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I understand. You know, I, I have a child that's in school too. He has special needs, really, it's, he wears it without issue, but, you know, I understand. I understand the concerns of parents about the masks. I'm also very, very cognizant of those, those families that are concerned about their children going to school and possibly getting sick and possibly getting other members of their family sick. So, it's, it's not easy to try to balance the needs of over 9,000 children. But please know that while we may not always agree, that I think that everyone here, that's really why we're, that's why we're here. We're here for the kids. And I would appreciate any other information that you have about ways that we can help children access mental health services, what our schools can be doing more, we've invested in social workers, we're invested in social emotional learning. It's a big issue. It was a big issue before the pandemic. The pandemic has made it worse and highlighted it, and, you know, I, I would like to think that just taking masks off will make everything better, but I think that there's, it's not going to be an easy fix. So, I look forward to working with the community and your expertise on this to, to move it forward.
I think we've done enough damage to a generation of kids in this country, so.
Thank you, Ms. Vitale. And I, I think this will not be the last speaker to talk on this subject, so I, I think I'll stop it here. But, Mr. Cutso, again, I appreciate your courage and your time tonight, and thank you for being here.
Thank you all for your thoughtful answers, and thank you very much. Okay?
Very much appreciate it. The young lady in the, young lady in the blue mask. They might not be a good differentiator, right?
Okay. Hi, I'm Hazel Foley. I am a senior at Fairfield Ward High School. And I think that, as we have said tonight, no one is, no one likes putting this mask on their face when they wake up in the morning and they go wherever they need to go that requires it. I would not willingly do this, but also, I can recognize the fact that this is not what is causing me to feel so much distress about this pandemic. Because when I was locked at home and I couldn't see my closest friends without being six feet away from them in my yard, I didn't, we weren't even wearing these yet. And this mask is what allowed me, two weeks ago, to go see my favorite band at a concert, surrounded by other people who are also willing to sacrifice this, to do what they want to do, to be with who they want to be. The fact that I can be in school, as a high schooler, as a high school senior, completely, completely full-time, to be with my friends who I didn't get to see for a year and a half, that, this is worth it to me. And I understand why we don't enjoy wearing them. I understand that it feels a lot, it feels kind of like a burden and something that we kind of want to regulate for ourselves, but I think we're looking at it in the wrong way. I think we need to recognize that the issues that we have are when we're in isolation, and this is something that is helping us get out of that isolation. This does not, this does not impact how close I feel to someone six feet away from me.
Well, thank, I'm sorry, are you finished? I don't mean to rush you, but.
No, just, I, I just, what I just cannot understand is why we are speaking for our children, why we are not talking to our, whether they are seven or they are 18 years old, why we're not asking them. My sister is an elementary education teacher, she teaches a class of fourth graders who wear masks every day. She tells me they do not complain.
Because they can.
They can speak.
Point of order, Mr. Martin. Please instruct the audience to.
Right, please.
Respect the opinions of all our.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Yes, if you could hold your comments, everyone will be more than welcome to come to the podium. This dishing lady was, had the courage to come forward and speak her mind, and I very much appreciate that. And again, as I said before, you know, the, you, coming at your age and speaking, is very important, I think, perspective for this board to have, so, so thank you for that. I will, I'll ask, send it to Ms. Rotelli for a comment.
Thank you, and thank you for coming out tonight. I think what's missing in this conversation is, well, one, a lot of these kids can't speak for themselves, so they go to their parents. And some of their parents, you know, tell the board. But speaking as a parent, and by the way, a lot of parents don't want to come out to a meeting like this because that exposes their child's mental health issue, and they don't want to make that public. But I think what the problem is here, and I see it a lot in social media and general conversations, is this idea that it doesn't bother me and I don't have a problem with it, and my sister says her class, you know, the kids don't complain. That's not for everybody. My sister is a preschool sped teacher in a neighboring district, and those children have a very hard time with masks and learning, and they get a lot of services. And I can't even imagine, as a parent of a child who received lots of services when she was younger, how much worse she would be off right now if for the past two years she was masked with a majority speech and language disorder impairment, okay? So, and you take those types of delays, and if you don't get proper intervention by fourth grade, it's going to take three times as long for that child to recover or even catch up. So, those are severe concerns for parents. But more on the mental health side of this, and less to the learning loss, because there's equal problems on both sides, is this feeling that these parents are being shamed, or these children are being shamed if they have trouble wearing masks. It's just one mitigation strategy that's been a problem. Quite honestly, shutting schools down was a problem, isolating kids was a problem, masks have been a problem. And the fact that we can't understand that that hurts somebody and not give them the proper respect of admitting and acknowledging that that is something that needs to be addressed, it's, it's not just immunocompromised people who have had a problem here. These children now have been masked for almost two years, and they don't have a way around that. It has been, wear a mask and deal with it. And that has exacerbated a problem that these kids have been experiencing for two years. So, what I'm saying, and I use this analogy with a couple of people, it's like we're all at the beach staring out at the water, okay? And we're all staring at the water, and we're just, we're guarding it and we're waiting. We don't want the kids to drown, so we're going to protect them, and we're staring out there. We don't want you to go out there because, you know, we're afraid that something might happen to you, and yet there's a bunch of children right at your feet who are drowning, and you're pushing their head below the water. So, we're not helping them. So, it might not be a problem for some people, and it might not be a problem for those over there, but for a large portion of people, this is a problem, and it's not being addressed. And in fact, we are in a national state of emergency for our children's mental health, and now we have this article that's out, again, within the last few days, but we just keep saying it, and we don't do anything about it. And so, advocating for masks to be optional is one way that we can reach those kids that need it to be an option for them to go about their lives. Now, I had said before, even if we just advocated for those kids with mental health issues to have a mask exemption, but you know, with that, it puts those kids with like a scarlet letter on them that, oh, that kid's got a mental health issue, they're not wearing a mask, and so that's a problem too. I just ask that everybody have respect for everybody's needs, because it is not just one aisle of, wear a mask and do your duty. Well, what are you doing to that child that has a significant issue? If you see a child with a panic attack, who's having an anxiety attack in school, and you meet that child with isolation and fear, and send them home, you're worsening the problem. You're not doing anything to fix it. We need compassion and empathy, and we need to listen to these kids and listen to the parents and come up with solutions for both sides. And there's never going to be a perfect solution here. I think if everybody acted, as most people do, with respect for one another, we could try to protect each other, but that doesn't just go for, you know, immunocompromised or worrying you're going to get physically sick. That also goes for your mental health needs. They're just as important, and we shouldn't have to sacrifice one for another.
Yeah, no, I absolutely, I understand exactly what you're saying with that, and.
If you could, if you could hold your plot, listen, I appreciate the support you're trying to give the speaker, but I want to make sure that everyone has the opportunity to come forward and speak their, so.
Thank you.
Please continue.
I understand that I am very privileged to speak about the mask mandate as an able-bodied person who does not suffer from sensory issues. I understand that, and I completely agree with most of what you're saying here. I understand that it's not possible to make everyone happy, and we need to prioritize the people whose physical and mental health is at risk because of a mask mandate or because of this pandemic. But I, I cannot understand why we need to, why we're having people who are speaking about mask mandates who are not affected by it in that way. Because I do, I do not see the correlation between a mental health illness and a mask. I see the correlation between isolation and the devastating effects. I'm a teenager who suffers with diagnosed depression and anxiety, and I can understand. I saw myself the effects of isolation, but I did not see, I was happier when I'm wearing this, and I understand that there are many people who were not, and we need to cater to the needs of those people. But we also need to be conscious of the fact that we are, we may be hurting more people who are physically compromised by immunodeficiencies, and if we are having less people in masks around those people, it is more dangerous, and I understand that's almost an impossible balance, but I think vaccination is a wonderful solution to that.
Well, vaccination is, it has been available. For everybody who is at most risk, right? And I think anyone who is immunocompromised has to make their own decision. That's what we do as adults. We decide what's best for us and how we can protect others. I think most people go about their days, you know, wondering how and doing what they can to protect others, but also, you know, put themselves as a priority as well. I just caution you or anybody to say, "It doesn't affect me, I don't understand it."
Right, that's not what I'm saying.
Is, it's not, I'm, I'm very glad it doesn't affect you. I personally know children, it absolutely affects. And so, every time I hear somebody say, "Well, it doesn't affect me and I don't understand, and, and, and I don't have a problem with it, and they don't have a problem with it, and my friends don't have a problem with it," you know, it's frustrating to the person who does, because it completely negates what they're trying to tell you. And I don't, and I'm not talking about anybody who's just like, "I'm not wearing a mask," you know, whatever, I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about these particular children and what we've heard since day one of, of parents literally telling us the problems that they've seen. And I agree, masks is just one, one issue, but the biggest thing to me, in order to reverse this situation and get our kids back on track, is trying to normalize the learning environment. And really, only way we're going to do that is to start to get rid of all this stuff.
Ms. Rotelli, I'm going to send it to the rest of the board, to Mr. Asa at this point, please. Ms. Asa.
So, first off, I want to applaud you for coming up and taking a stance and making the comments that you did, that some people agree with, some people don't. So, it takes a lot of courage to come up here and do that, so thank you. I understand that for you, and quite honestly, for me, I wear, I work for a hospital, I wear a mask eight, 10 hours a day, every day. I have for 20 months. But I'm not my child. And my children happen to be on the younger side. And as a parent of a kindergartner who is ripe and in the most important portion of their developmental stage, including their education, being able to see the teacher's lips move, talk to a speech or language specialist, there are absolute, I don't want to belabor this, because, and I don't want to tell you that you're wrong, but just understanding where you're coming from, and just like your sister, she says the fourth graders, they wear a mask with no problem. I probably agree with her. My third grader in his class appear to wear a mask with no problem. But what people don't see is what we see at home. And that's nothing, the teachers also sometimes will see stuff that the parents don't see. So, in that situation, maybe that is the case. But again, for me, it took a long time to realize that there were issues, and it's not just the mask, it's, it's the whole picture. And for me, at a certain point, and I said it to the previous speaker, vaccination was key for me, right? Vaccination was key, it's available. At some point, we have to realize as a society that COVID is not going away. It is here for a long time. And what do we do with the flu? We get flu shots. When we get sick and show symptoms, we keep our kids home. We don't send them to school until they're fever-free for 24 to 48 hours or symptom-free. At a certain point, we need to take that path, and now that we have vaccinations available that are hopefully keeping people from dying and out of the hospital, and having a cold symptom when you get COVID, when you're vaccinated, we have to balance that at a certain point. And for me, we're on that doorstep now.
Right, yeah, once again, I completely understand that there are hundreds, thousands of people who do suffer from masks, much more than I do. And I cannot imagine being a little child and having to sit through a class wearing a mask, it would definitely bother me. But I don't think that we can remove the mask mandate in, in schools for young children until we can get them vaccinated, until every student. until we can get them vaccinated, until every student K through 12 can attend a room full of vaccinated people who can take off their masks.
Thank you, Ms. Foley. There's three or four board members that would like to comment on this. I want to move this forward just a little bit. Very important topic, and I know there'll probably be other people who would like to comment. Ms. Guernsey.
Thanks so much, Ms. Foley, for coming out. It's so brave, and what I love about you speaking today is it's such an important perspective. I mean, I am hearing from students that aren't finding masks to be a problem, and I think that when we went, you know, when we reopened the schools, this board was really concerned about, you know, are the kids going to be able to wear masks? And, you know, clearly, there's a portion of students that this is an absolute nightmare. It's, you know, really destructive to them. And then to see how well it's worked for you and some of your peers, that's an important balance, and I think that the perspective was really important to share, so thank you for that.
Thank you, Ms. Guernsey. Ms. Jacobson and Ms. Maxime Canelli.
Hi, thank you for coming up. I know that everyone's talking about masks right now, but I think that one of the issues that I have been most concerned about since this pandemic, with many things, has been the practices in our state around quarantine, which is a far greater number of kids that we're sending home for extended periods of time that do not have COVID. So at the end, what other states at this point have evolved, whereas Connecticut has really not evolved. So we need to make use of the technologies that are available at our use and our disposal, and I would hope that the Commissioner of Department of Public Health moves our state further along beyond this in-school-only screen and stay, because that's not the only tool that we have available in order to keep more kids in school safe and avoid some of this extended periods away from school, and to your point, away from their peers and isolated for seven to 14 days, depending on what path their parents choose to take with testing out of that after seven days. So just another piece, that's not mask-related, I understand, but have advocated strongly that we evolve our quarantine practices.
Ms. Maxime Canelli, I think you'll wrap up this portion of our discussion.
Yeah, just one brief comment. Again, thank you for coming up, and I do want to point out that you and our previous speaker, while appearing to speak to two different points, actually have a vital point in common, which is the isolating impact and what has evolved over the past year and a half. For you, the mask is a source of relief, because it keeps you from being isolated, and yet somebody else who had a devastating impact, undoubtedly in large part due to isolation. And so I just want to point out that you have that point actually in common. And the one thing that I would add that hasn't been stated, but was also referenced by our previous speaker, the significant change now is that we have much more data now than we had before, and that what we've always been doing with these mitigation strategies is weighing the risk. And at a point in time when we sent everyone home, it was because the risk was so substantial and so unknown, we sent children home for months. And look at what happened with that. We did it because we did not know what we were facing. Last school year, the situation evolved, and we changed our mitigation strategies over the course of the year as we learned more and more. And I think what that brings us to in present day, because I do want to wrap it up, because we do have other people who want to comment as well, is that what we've now learned is that, in fact, the likelihood of a devastating impact of COVID, especially for school-aged children, is exceedingly minimal. We did not know that before. We had a right to fear because we didn't know. It was pure conjecture. Now we have data, and I think that's the point that many parents are trying to say is that it's not an either/or, either you're home or you're in school masked, it's that you can be in school not masked, and that that is a reasonable risk assessment to take. And that for many of our younger children, it is also true, who are also facing, for them, the risk appears to be far more negative for many of them masked than unmasked. And so it's, I'll just leave it there, that I do think that the one part of this conversation that was bearing repeating was the notion of, we now know an awful lot more about this that we did not know before, and that it is time for us therefore to evolve our policies accordingly.
Thank you, Ms. Maxime Canelli. Thank you, Ms. Foley, for your time. Let's see, I'm going to go to this side, jump in the front here with the, yes. What is your name, sir?
My name is John Whaley.
John Whaley.
I believe I had your son, Mr. Duet.
Yes, you did, Mr. Whaley.
Yes, how's Ryan doing?
My twins are both doing very well at Stone Hill College, thank you, and they're...
I didn't have Anna. I apologize for not asking.
And they're flourishing because of a Fairfield education, specifically award education. So thank you for your part in that.
And thank you for letting us teach your children. I want to start with, there's lots of talks about masks and mental health tonight. Where do you hear about what having kids compete against each other for grades in order to rank and sort them does to their emotional well-being? But that's not what we're going to discuss. So Fairfield Equity Coalition, I believe you guys all had a presentation from them last year, maybe even earlier this year, and it seemed like resoundingly you championed what they wanted to do within our school district. I'm going to read their first actionable step. It says, "Ensure curricula for all grade levels prioritizes cultural and racial diversity by amplifying representative perspectives and experiences of historically marginalized groups." Seems as though having a year-long U.S. history course devoted to Black and Latinx perspectives would do just that. A quote from somebody from the class of 2014 says, "I feel that history classes covered racial inequality as if it was a thing of the past. For example, we learned that slavery and the Civil Rights Movement happened, but I don't remember discussing the current ongoing racial inequalities in America. Again, a full year, graduation requirement, U.S. history course with Black and Latinx perspectives might ameliorate that." But I want to speak directly to you, Ms. Maxime Canelli, if you wouldn't mind. You say deliberately and willfully ignore other perspectives. I'm wondering what exactly are the perspectives that are ignored, especially since according to the CERC document, that seems maybe a dubious claim. Part two is, since the State Department of Ed has no definition for a survey course, I'm wondering what your definition is and how this course doesn't fulfill it from your perspective. Thank you.
Happy to talk.
Thank you, Mr. Whaley. Well, no, I'm assuming you're going to take this one, Ms. Maxime Canelli, so...
So, and I do apologize, I had, we've received a number of emails on a host of topics, and I have a backlog of several I have to reply to, so please know that, well, maybe I'm replying it now, but I have a feeling I won't touch on everything I want to say. First thing I want to say about that FEC presentation, the board gave no feedback for the most part whatsoever beyond a, thank you for your work, we appreciate your perspective, we know we have work to do. Now, I'm doing that off the top of my head, I'm sure it was more nuanced than that, but we in no way took apart that presentation to say what this board supported, what this board was interested by, and in fact, what this board rejected. We did not give that feedback. So I want to be very clear that when FEC gets quoted in curriculum presentations, it would be my stance that that was inappropriate.
Thank you for having that on record, appreciate that.
And I do want to say, I do appreciate their work. I am working with members of FEC. I think this is hard work, it involves conversations, it involves education, and it needs to continue, and we need to improve and evolve. But to the point of FEC, I think it's important that that say, and I think it's a conversation we need to bring back up again, but it hasn't happened yet. Secondly, regarding the, well, I forget the question regarding the willful, because obviously I've used that word a number of times. Could you repeat the question?
Yeah, the question was, you said deliberately, and intentionally, I believe, was the other term, left out, deliberately, willfully ignore other perspectives. I'm just wondering, what are the other perspectives that are being ignored?
That would be a Native American perspective, that would be the English-American perspective, the Scandinavian-American perspective, the Irish-American perspective, the French-American perspective, the Asian-American perspective. I could go on.
And so what I'm hearing, I'm assuming, is that in the U.S. history survey course that all students take, all of those perspectives are hit upon?
I don't think we have a perfect course, Mr. Whaley. I think it needs work. We have all said that, but what I do not support, what we have right now is a U.S. history requirement. That course is meant to make an effort at covering the scope of U.S. history, including all perspectives, and not deliberately leaving out a perspective. Deliberately leaving out a perspective. This course is focusing on the perspective as the title captures, and I don't think that's up exactly for debate. I'm not saying that there is no Caucasian, Asian, Native American person mentioned in the course. I'm not trying to say that they don't exist or aren't acknowledged, but their perspective is absolutely left out, because that's the intention of the course. I would also say that the state did not intend this to fulfill any, first of all, the state does not have a U.S. history requirement. I would remind you of that, that with the new graduation requirements, the only social studies requirement is civics. It is simply a bucket of humanities that need to be fulfilled. Fairfield and most of the members of this board voted that the U.S. history course, as it existed, was important enough that it needed to be a graduation requirement. That was a vote we took, and we had this discussion in policy on why does our U.S. history course matter that much in the preparation of our future citizens? And we made the decision, Fairfield, to add it to our policy. And this course is not trying to be that. It is trying to be more specialized, and I support that. I don't have that as a criticism. I hope it gives birth to more. I hope it is the genesis for more courses where we can capture so many perspectives. I absolutely wish the state had not forced it to be a full year. I think that has had a devastating impact on this course. I wish that that were not the case. But again, I don't want to take all your time. So that is your point about the willful, that was your point about the FEC, and your third point?
Survey. You keep bringing up this idea of a survey course.
You're right. And you know what? I'm going to put it back on the social studies department, because what has never been presented to us by the social studies professionals of this district is what do they think should be covered in a U.S. history course? And for them not to have even had that discussion, so that they can come back to us and say, these are the bedrock parts, the foundation of American history, without which our students are at a deficit to graduate without having hit those points? And then to just say willy-nilly, well, okay, no, willy-nilly is derogatory, and I take that back, but then to just say, well, this one hits enough points, well, are they the points we want to hit? What about the westward expansion? What about the Industrial Revolution? What about prohibition? What about aspects of McCarthyism and the Cold War? I would argue that those are vitally important, that we hit those as American standards, that we talk about the Federalist Papers, and I know I'm going out of order. Those are my opinion. Where is the discussion that this is what a U.S. history course survey must hit? And then we can have the evaluation on if this course fulfills that.
Wouldn't that be the U.S. history curriculum? Like, that document, wouldn't that be that?
Which will be coming up for review within a few years.
But it does exist, right?
Yes, there is a survey course now.
So there was a crosswalk that...
That crosswalk only pointed out the points in common conveniently, and I'll say that conveniently, because I called staff on that at the time, where does it point out what got left out on both sides? So that this course being proposed, what does it have that U.S. history doesn't, but also, what does our U.S. history course curriculum cover not covered here?
So are you willing to say if it does cover that, like, meaning like, if they point out the things that are missing, you'd be willing to consider this course for the full year history graduate requirement?
I've already read the documents. It does not.
Okay.
There's an awful lot that is left out.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for the particulars there. I think, I think, Mr. Whaley, you left here with homework, and I think it's good homework, right? I'm assuming there are no other, no other comments on that. Thank you, Ms. Maxime Canelli. What about the lady in the back with her mask on? Yes, you. No, sorry. Yes, no, you, dark hair, sorry. Oh, you both have dark hair.
This feels like the Price is Right.
Oh my gosh, the lady with the green sweater. Think this is easy, right?
Hi there, I'm Amy Guerrero.
Hi, Amy.
Hi, neighbor...
Neighbor, yeah.
Okay, so originally, I was here to say a few comments. I'm going to stay on the same topic, though, of the Black and Latino American history. After hearing Mr. Staton speak, though, I was sort of processing my thoughts. And quite frankly, I would like to hear more about Mr. Staton's work on the crosswalk and the things that he's doing to contribute to Fairfield's, how Fairfield is going to be putting together this class. I'm very pleased that the state of Connecticut will be on a path towards transformative change with regard to Black and Latino history. I think I agree with what Mrs. Maxime Canelli said, that perhaps this could be a genesis point for including more marginalized history. That is my hope as a person of color, as an Asian-Pacific American, who didn't get the history until college and beyond. I'm hopeful that the Black and Latin American history course will include intersectionality, will include the history of solidarity amongst different kinds of backgrounds of people. Anyhow, my thoughts about this course being offered as an AP course and/or one that satisfies the U.S. history requirement is evolving. They're great ideas. I hope that one day they get there. My thought is not for now, because there's so much discussion. I feel like it's too much too soon. I'm wondering if, and thinking more and more, that what the Board of Admin and teachers need to focus on is getting this course right from the start. I want our district to have a Black and Latino American history class that we all can be proud of, that is a model for the state. I want us to focus on getting right the materials, the scope and the sequence, the restorative language, the tone, and the training, and most importantly, the ongoing support for the faculty and the students of color, quite frankly, but the faculty who will be teaching this course at both high schools, and making sure that there's equity between the two. I want to make sure that our district, let's all agree to make sure that our district is in conversation with those high schools who piloted this course, especially those with similar demographics as ours, so we can learn from their challenges and design a course that does right our Black and Latinx brothers and sisters in our community. I want our, I want us to be really getting this course right. So I wanted to get some comments and questions and...
No, thank you for your comments. Mr. Peterson.
Sure, thanks, thanks very much for your perspective on this. Just as a couple of kind of clarification points, primarily, this is a course that has been designed largely at the state level by the State Education Resource Center, a group known as CERC pursuant to a bill that passed through the Connecticut Legislature. We are using that, our social studies department is using that as the backbone of the course. And obviously, they're doing a lot of work, as you say, on implementation and that sort of thing, but in terms of what our responsibility is in offering this course, it's determined largely by that state course. The legislation says specifically, the districts shall offer this course.
Right.
And those documents are available, by the way, the CERC documents covering this curriculum are vast and very deep. And I know that the, you know, the administration is working very hard and trying to figure out how that is going to be implemented here in town. I know one of the things that they have already, in conversations with other districts, what they've been hearing, is that the material as laid out by CERC is too dense, that there's too much information to fit into a year, into a single-year course. So that's a bit of a concern there. In terms of, and I think that kind of comes back to a point you raised earlier about bringing more material into the course.
Or the right material, or the, you know...
Yeah, no, no, and I hear that, I very much hear that. I am concerned that the course as it's currently structured doesn't have a lot of room for other perspectives, and that we, in responding to the state legislation, have kind of little elbow room to make it our own, like you say. This is not something that grew organically in town, this is something that we're adapting from a state model.
On a state level, yes, exactly.
Which presents a lot of challenges for the teachers and staff trying to implement this course. So I just, I want to be very specific on that point, is that our amount of leeway is... So I just, I want to be very specific on that point, is that our amount of leeway is more limited than maybe, you know, people up here and even the staff might like in terms of how to make the course broader.
Okay, I appreciate that because there's a lot to take in and all this information. So I appreciate that boiling that down for me. But what I'm also hopeful for is maybe the transformation of our U.S. history curriculum. And that material that can't be included in this course, let's look at that and transform and make our U.S. history more inclusive of marginalized histories.
I would just like to say that I agree completely. And I think that the fundamental thrust of this course and what the social studies department is trying to do is to decentralize the narrative from a white-only perspective, which I think is long overdue and very welcome.
Great, thank you. And I just, I brought this book. I am a public educator myself. I'm a school media specialist in a neighboring district. And this book has really opened my eyes. As someone who was born and raised in the United States, we are all, people of color included, are and have been ingrained with racist ideas. And so to be open to different perspectives and ways, different ways of seeing things is of the utmost importance, as you all are in charge of directing our curriculum.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
Listen, we've had, thank you. I just want to be sensitive to the fact we're almost two hours in. I know this has been a fun two hours. It's been fun for me. It's very educational for me. Is there anyone who has a topic that hasn't been addressed tonight that maybe? This lady here looks very adamant about talking about her topic, so.
It's a new one.
Oh, it's a new topic. I want to mix it up here a little bit at 10 o'clock.
It's new, but related.
And what is your name?
My name is Sarah Evans.
Sarah, Ms. Evans. Thank you for coming down tonight.
Thank you. Okay, so my comment pertains to something that hasn't been raised tonight, and that's the achievement gap data that was discussed on October 26th. A new topic, but also related to some of the things that have already been discussed. And so, as you know, that data showed striking disparities in test scores, enrollment in AP and advanced courses, chronic absenteeism, and suspension rates in Black, Hispanic, and high-need students compared with white and non-high-need students. And so I've listened to many board members tonight and at previous meetings speak with passion about the need for programs like Math Academy, which I also support and which seems like a fantastic program, but serves a small number of students, as I think we can all agree. And we've also spoken with passion about students who have mental health needs that are not being served, whether that's due to isolation or masking, or social media, or what have you, right? And we've spoken with a lot of passion about that here in these meetings. But what I was really disappointed about at the October 26 meeting is that I didn't hear that same passion brought to the conversation when the achievement gap data was presented. You saw four years of actual qualitative data showing that our public schools are failing a select and considerably large group of students. So in 2020 to 2021, we had 247 FPS students who were Black, 1,127 who identified as Hispanic or Latino, and 459 identified as two or more races. 15.8% of students are eligible for free lunch and 2.6% are English learners. So after that data was presented, I was really disappointed, as I said, that the bulk of the discussion then focused on how all students were impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic. And that's not, that was explicitly stated that that was not what that analysis was designed to look at. While, yes, we see some of that in the data, that's not the purpose of the analysis, and those disparities existed well before COVID. And so, you know, my question for you all tonight is, how do you plan to address these gaps? Can you comment on what you think the underlying causes are? And when are we going to hear a meaningful discussion about what I think is really concerning data? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Evans. Would someone from the board like to address Ms. Evans' comments or questions? I'm going to get to Ms. Vitale. No, I'm sorry, I'm laughing at Ms. Maxine Cannelli. But Ms. Vitale, please.
Thank you for your comments. And the board will be revisiting that data presentation because you're right, there is a lot of data that was presented that we did not discuss. I can't give you an exact date, but it will be in the upcoming months. Delving down into the test scores, how that relates to the absenteeism rate, students need to be in school, they need to be engaged. So I guess my answer is to be continued. I think that the reaction at the table at that time was very much still, we're somewhat in crisis mode and reacting to the pandemic. And I apologize that the discussion didn't fully address all the data presented that night.
Okay, thank, Ms. Jacobson.
Hi, thank you for the question. And subgroup population data and our achievement has been something I've tracked for a really long time, well before the pandemic. Simple surface-level answers, there's that in the recent years, I think, that our superintendent and this board have invested additional resources into greater SREI interventions. We're using ARP funds for that summer boost program, we're using the after-school 6 to 12 program. We are also increasing, you know, we have the Early Literacy Academy that we're working on now. So there's a lot of things, also changing some of our policies. So I tracked the chronic absenteeism data very closely last year. Fairfield did not do well relative to our peers in Fairfield County, either as an all-student population group or by subpopulation. And, you know, we all know that the state did this on for all districts, is that depending on your model, if you had more remote days, there was more chronic absenteeism. That's also coupled with people who just had concerns about coming to school, too, during this time. So do you have something to say about that?
Yeah, with due respect, I'm not referring to the impact of the COVID-19 pandemic. I'm talking about situations that existed prior to last year. So this has nothing to do with hybrid or remote models. I'm asking you to shift the conversation to look at why Black and Hispanic students are more impacted by chronic absenteeism than the student body as a whole. That's just, you know, I mean, I understand that there are programs in place, but how are you specifically going to help those children that have not been helped through those programs over the past several years?
Well, we, first of all, we did, I brought forth a policy suggestion to the committee because we have a chronic absenteeism district teams that have to, were originally only at the district or school level, but not by the subgroup population level. So are we, this, in the last year, the board adopted a new policy to amend that policy so that not only if it is for a district as a whole, a school as a whole, but if any subgroup population has a chronic absenteeism rate, that the district has to then conduct a team to dig or dive into that. So we've expanded that policy to address this great concern that I share with you very much.
Thank you. And I, just to piggyback on Ms. Jacobson, in terms of investment, we've talked a lot about mental health and social emotional needs of our students. And I think that that also may play into absenteeism. This past year, we've invested into more social workers to try to strengthen the school-home connection to see what other factors may be coming into play, why students are not coming to school. Are they engaged in their curriculum? Are there, is school climate an issue? Like, there are many different layers to this that, you know, the board, I think, is committed to discussing and looking into, especially as we move forward with our district improvement plan. We used our ARPA funds to hire a DEI coordinator who I think will help guide this work because we realize that this achievement gap is not new to the pandemic. We've been facing it for many, many years. And, you know, as we move forward, we appreciate that we need to take a deeper dive. Board members have, we looked at it in policy, but there's a lot more work to be done. So I know I'm still putting you off in the exact, you know, next steps, but this is something that the board realizes is a priority, and we're going to move forward this year in addressing these issues.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you, Ms. Jacobson. Thank you, Ms. Vitale. Thank you, Ms. Evans.
Yeah, and I just want to point out that I think that, you know, all of the comments, really great comments that you've heard about the African-American, Black, Latino, and Puerto Rican studies course should be considered when you're thinking about how you're serving those students. And the fact that when they don't feel like they have supports or people like them or, you know, individuals that they can turn to in the classroom, that can greatly affect their performance. So, you know, I think that these things are all tied together, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Is yours a different topic as well?
It's like a different idea off of a topic. I'm very important. I'm like, what's my first?
I'm gonna, you go ahead, and then I see that the enthusiastic gentleman in the back row, I'll go to him next.
Totally do as well.
And what is your name?
My name's Zara Smith.
Laura, you said, smart?
Zara, Z-A-R-A.
Oh, sorry, Zara Smith.
No, you're good. So I'm here today to address some of the comments about mental health regarding the pandemic. So I'm just going to start off by kind of talking about my story. I'm a junior at Fairfield Lethal High School, and I struggle with severe anxiety and depression. I've lost multiple people in my family and people that I know and also don't know so well to suicide. So it's an issue that's very close to my heart and something that I advocate for through my schoolwork and like my outside-of-school things as well. I'm a part of the Bring Change to Mind Committee and a lot of other things in my life to try and fight for, like, equality for mental health. I wanted to speak today about what we can do to hopefully make change before the end of the mask mandate for kids who are struggling with mental health in school. I mean, I've seen in some of my peers and also in myself, a spike in the, like, struggle that we all have regarding mental health because of the pandemic and because of the isolation that we've all faced over the past few months. I'm really lucky to have access to a 504 plan because of my diagnosis. However, a lot of people aren't as lucky as me and don't get that access to accommodations, even though some of them might need it, especially after what we faced through COVID. So my question for the board is before the end or hopefully, like, the end of the mask mandate, not really sure when that's going to be, what can we do to be able to support students like me and those without 504 plans? I know that I've tried to utilize the counseling offices and the counseling system to the best of my ability, however, it's still not what I think should be helpful for kids. And I'm, like I mentioned before, I'm very lucky to have access to a 504 plan and to be able to use, like, my accommodations. However, a lot of children and kids like me, especially high schoolers, don't get that ability, and it's really hard to be able to get a 504 plan as well. And so I feel like the counseling system is lacking a little bit. Also, we've had one mental health assembly, which I think was very motivating and very important to our school system. However, I do believe that we do need many, many more of them to be able to make substantial and systemic change within our school system. And I also think that another kind of idea stemming off of that is the idea of health class and how we don't really talk much about mental health and, like, what people face, are faced with every day. We talk about how to prevent STDs and how to eat healthy, but we don't really focus and hone in specifically on mental health and what, like, kids and people are facing, like, throughout our world and throughout our country, considering that suicide is the second highest cause of death right now for teens in our country. So like I said before, I just wanted to pose the question, what can we do before the end of the mask mandate to be able to help students who are struggling with mental health, as many, and then like we've seen an uprise in the amount of kids who are struggling right now? I don't know if you guys know the answer to that question, but I just-
Well, no, thank you for your comments, and thank you for bringing the topic forward. Let's throw it to the board and see if anyone has a comment, or Ms. Rotelli.
Thank you. And I just wanted to say thank you for coming out and speaking. I know it takes a lot of courage, especially when you're talking about something that you've been struggling with. And to be quite honest with you, I think it's people like you speaking about these types of things that are going to help a lot of other children, and parents for that matter, understand exactly what it is that you might need. And I encourage you to give any input or thoughts you might have to the board and the superintendent, because I think your perspective is valuable. I also think you touched on something that's very, very important, your access to a 504. And I hope that everyone listening today and watching knows that if they have a child who is struggling and they've seen something, don't wait, don't wait for the school to approach you, approach them. Ask for a 504. Get the evaluations, get the help, get the accommodations. It's very important and it's available. And it is completely underutilized. And I think one thing I said at one of our recent board meetings, when I was really trying to dig into the SPED data to prove some points about mental health, and then realizing I had about three families approach me, all on the brink of school refusal, and not one of them was identified. No 504, no IEP. So these are children that are in our school system that are days away from not attending at all, and they're not identified in any of our numbers. And this is what we're going to be dealing with. This is the long-haul COVID mental health impact that we'll be feeling for years and years to come. So I think there's that. You're right about health class. One of the things some of us said at the very beginning of the pandemic was how we were going to try to tackle anxiety when this all came out, and it was very scary. But there's a lot of other things that we can be doing outside of masks and vaccines to take care of ourselves and really focusing in our health classes on healthy habits and what that means as far as maintaining diet and exercise, stress, vitamin D, meditation. Those are all really strong tools that everybody can practice and can strengthen our children when dealing with this level of anxiety. But thank you again, truly.
Yeah, thank you. I also think that, like, it's so important to be able to educate our kids and our students on mental health, to be able to recognize in themselves these issues, too, and to feel comfortable to be able to speak about what they're experiencing. I think that I'm extremely lucky to be able to live in a family where mental health is something that's been talked about since I was very little, and to be able to, like, feel comfortable in a place with my family to be able to say, I need help, I'm struggling. But a lot of kids don't have that privilege that I do. And so I think that making school that safe place to be able to, like, have kids understand what they're experiencing and that they do need extra help and that's totally okay is something that needs to be changed. And so I think through that changing, I mean, I know changing curriculum is extremely hard, but being able to, like, really focus in on certain things in health and be able to focus advisories and assemblies and to change, like, the way that we view and our, like, wanted outcomes of these kind of implemented systems within our school system is really important in kind of changing this idea.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna start enforcing our time a little bit more. I really didn't think we would be at 10:15, and I would be looking at more hands than maybe I can get in 11 o'clock. So very worthwhile topic. Thank you for bringing it forward.
Thank you.
I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go back to the gentleman with the, that we put on pause for a few minutes. Oh, I'm sorry, I missed Mr. Darrell, sorry. You're next, Mr. Darrell. After this gentleman, right, please.
Hello.
Hi, what's your name?
My name's Rishi Patney. I go to Fairfield Ward High School. I'm a senior.
All right, go on. Let me just write my name.
I'm here for Morris Report.
Okay, good.
First of all, thank you guys for giving me the opportunity to voice my opinion and my views. I moved to America when I was eight years old. I spent 10 years in the Fairfield Public Schools system. Year after year, I go through the required social studies course. I learn again and again about history- I learn again and again about history through the same perspective, the same lens every year. Last year, I took the U.S. History course. I was in U.S. History Honors, actually. And we learned in depth about what we've been taught already throughout our education in the school system. In fact, what do we learn, what do we learn about black people?
To be honest, like the main, the main thing that we learned in that class was just slavery and nothing really about current events. It was mainly about that.
So I just wanna know if, if we're learning about the same things just in depth, then why can't for one year, we just focus on, why can't it be a mandatory course to learn about a different perspective that isn't just the perspective of a white person? And also, what's your name in the purple?
That's Ms. Maxim Cannelly.
Ms. Max and Kelly. When Mr. Whaley was up talking, you said, um, you said, "The Fairfield Public Schools teaches the course that the title captures and it gives the perspective of what the title of the course captures." So I wanna know why the U.S. History course is really just teaching white history and not the history of multiple races and multiple perspectives in this country? And why black history and Latinx history is just about black history and Latinx history?
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your question. I think some of this has been addressed tonight. Would anyone, would anyone like to address this further? Yes, please.
If I don't, I, I'm not perfectly clear on your, on your question, so if I don't answer it, please, you know, fire back at me so I can be very clear. The U.S. History course is not intended to be, I just wanna make sure you're hearing me. It's not the Caucasian history. It's, that is not what it's intended to be. I believe you covered the 1960s. I believe you covered the civil rights.
What is it intended to be?
I'm sorry?
What is it intended to be?
What is what intended to be?
The U.S. History course.
It is intended to be a survey of the history of this country. It is intended to cover multiple perspectives. It is intended to cover, I, I don't consider, for example, Pearl Harbor. I do not consider McCarthyism to be the history of white America. I consider that to be, I don't consider the Westward Expansion. I don't consider the Industrial Revolution. I don't consider Federalist Papers to be white history. I consider it to be the history of this country for all of its citizens. And the Civil Rights Movement is the history of this country. 9/11 is the history of this country. I'm, and this is obviously, I'm not prepared to answer your question, so I'm doing, firing this off the top of my head.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
So that, these are all topics that are the history of the country and they don't have a perspective to them. You need to learn, I believe our students need to learn about these as events to be, and I've repeated this phrase, to be knowledgeable American citizens upon graduation. I do not consider, again, I do not consider those to be of a race. Multiple, many races are involved in the events of, again, Pearl Harbor, et cetera. And so I think that those are important events to cover.
In my experience, after taking the U.S. History course, I think it just focuses on white history rather than other perspectives of history. So what I'm saying is it focuses on one perspective and it kind of leaves in the shadows other perspectives. So why in the U.S. History course is only one perspective being addressed? And why is it so painful for the black and Latinx history course to be a required course so that our stu-, Fairfield Public School students can get a holistic view of what real American history would be?
If, if I may, if I may, Ms. Maxim Cannelly.
Sure.
I, I, I think what Ms. Maxim Cannelly is saying is that you are getting a holistic view of, of history today, right? You may not be viewing it that way. This is an outside, not Board of Ed perspective, right? This is just a taxpayer in town perspective. You may be, you're viewing it from a different perspective. There's, there's other people here tonight that are talking about other topics. I, I have to be, you know, just aware of, of time here. I think you're both saying the same thing, right? But the board has said a couple of different times here that, you know, the, I think the, I think the, the object of the history curriculum is to teach of every, the history of everyone in the United States and maybe, maybe pursuing it, one, one specific aspect of it is, is not, is not well placed. So I, I, I wanna make sure your question's answered, but, but I, I don't know if you're, you're hearing what Ms. Maxim Cannelly is, is saying to you.
I hear what you're saying. I appreciate it. But what I am getting at right now is that we've already learned about the subjects being taught in U.S. History, so why we can't learn about black and Latinx history for one year? I don't understand why that can't be a mandatory, mandatory course for us to learn about. I took U.S. History last year, I didn't even hear the words, I hear the name Malcolm X leave his, any teacher's mouth. And is that not an important part of Amer-, U.S. History?
I, Ms. Guernsey is, is, I think, gonna offer a better perspective than I can.
So first of all, I, I think you're spot on. I mean, you're a student that's receiving this education and for you to have that kind of outcome of an experience, I'm, I'm sure that there are many teachers in our social studies department that would be really disappointed to hear that because there are many that clearly are focused on offering multiple perspectives. But the fact that you didn't receive that instruction is, is really disturbing to me and it's exactly why I support this course. It's so needed. I don't believe that it should be mandatory. I think that it's, you know, eventually, hopefully, the best of this course will be incorporated into our other U.S. History courses that we offer. But, you know, what you're asking for, I think, is very reasonable. I mean, to wanna see your own perspective. I had a conversation with my husband. He's from Virginia. I'm from Massachusetts. Our experience with U.S. History was so vastly different. He knows more about Thomas Jefferson that is even imaginable. And, you know, I thought Patriots Day was actually a real holiday. So, I mean, these perspectives are really important and we make decisions every time we, we create a course about what, what perspectives, you know, are gonna be a part of it. And clearly there's a need for this. That's why the course was created. That's why I support it. And I can see right in front of me someone that would have clearly benefited from it. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. But I just wanna say that it doesn't really feel like a need from you guys. It feels like a token gesture because if it was a need, then it would be a graduation requirement to take the class, whereas kids need to know about this aspect of history because there's a lot of ignorance in the Fairfield Public School system that you guys don't see, only we can see it because we're in the schools, you know, you feel me? So I feel like this is the perfect opportunity to nip that in the bud and stop ignorant comments like what Mr. DeWitt said when I got up to speak. He said, um, hold on, I wrote it down.
You don't have to mimic back my ignorant.
I just wanna make sure I got it right. You said, "I hope you don't rob us," when I stood up with a bandana.
Sorry, sorry, that's a, that's a referral to, it's a referral to the, to the Westward Expansion that Ms. Maxim Cannelly was saying, where the bandits used to wear, you know, things over their face. So it was not intended to be anything other than that. My apologies. I'm gonna give this to Mr. Peterson for the final comment.
Thanks, thanks for coming up tonight and thanks to all the students who come up. We, we do value these kind of on the ground, frontline perspectives. You may not think we do, but, but we do. I, I just wanna say specifically your point about this being a mandatory course, that's, that's certainly an argument that one can make, but I wanna clarify that that's not what the social, the social studies department and the administration have, have proposed to us. What they have proposed specifically is that this course, this proposed course would fulfill the graduation requirement for students to take U.S. History. It's not, it was not proposed to us as a mandatory course, although one can advocate for that if that's, if that's something that you wanna do.
Thank you. All right, thank you for your comments. Mr. Darrell. I'll be quick. Alex Darrell, RTM3, I guess. Okay. While our town is apparently growing and we have had educational priorities stated tonight, I hope the dreaded R-word, redistricting, where did I put it? Is something that is more than discussed, surveyed and RFP'd like before the pandemic and instead implemented in the near future. You decided to work for Fairfield's families. I know children are not widgets because I work with hundreds of them every day in a public middle school. Families need structure and reliability and they'd rather have it sooner than later. To quote someone who said something to me, who happened to have been Fairfield's first female chairperson of the Board of Education, "Do your job and earn your respect. The more you do the former, the more you'll get of the latter." Thank you. Good night and good luck. Thank, thank you, Mr. Darrell. Mr. Peterson.
Thank you so much and props to your mom. I just, I would wanna say that as, I imagine that I'm the most pro-redistricting member of this board. I bring it up all the time. You know, we, we have challenges we never lose sight of, even during COVID, this is, this is something, one of the last meetings that we had before we, before we went into quarantine lockdown was about a, an enrollment survey. And we actually may be looking to renew that survey to get better data going ahead because we do have a lot of decisions that are coming down the road for us regardless of what other priorities we have. But at the same time, I will also say that I do think that we have to be sensitive to the fact that the students of the district have been through a lot. And to drop a major thing on them is something that we should only do, you know, after treading very, very carefully, so.
It'll probably take years because it's been years.
It certainly would be a long-term process and I'm, I'm all in favor of doing, doing the work and I believe this board in the, in the coming years will be doing some of that work.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Darrell. Oh, Ms. Jacobson.
Hi, thank you for your comment. I wasn't quite sure what you were saying there for a second, but I'm gathering that it's, you're trying to say that we should redistrict.
No, I said you should look into it and then implement it. You've had plenty of time.
Okay. So I know, I know you've been here the whole night and kind of heard a lot of concerns with different age groups and subgroup populations and all things going on, so I would piggyback on the thing that, to me, at this time, I find it almost a not helpful suggestion, but that's just my perspective at this time.
Okay, well, thank you again, Mr. Darrell.
Thank you.
Gentleman in the back. Oh, I'm so, I know, you guys. Hi. Hi, what's your name?
My name is River Peterson. I am a sophomore at Fairfield Ward High School. I've been asked to read a statement that was made by FPS parent and epidemiologist, Dr. Marnie White, professor from the Yale School of Public Health about COVID-19. But I promise, I also have something else to ask. I actually have two kind of mini questions, if that's all right, that are completely unrelated to COVID-19.
As long as you can do it within three minutes.
I will try my best. All right, COVID-19 really comes. There remains a need for continued universal masking in schools. Fairfield is experiencing high transmission and alarmingly high rates of vaccine refusal. Indoor environments remain high risk. FPS should be doing pooled testing, random testing of unvaccinated students and additional and regular opt-in testing as is done in other districts and as recommended by the CDC. I would just like to mention that these are not my personal beliefs, but I have been asked to read a statement. Now, I have two questions. My first question is, I have a lot of things that I would like to say and I know a lot of people who couldn't be here also have a lot of things to say. How would be the best way to reach you? Because I feel like, you know, writing a letter, while practical to get all of my feelings out would be a little bit impersonal. So how may I best, when is the best time to address you in person? I'm asking, like, when could we, when can I expect something like this to happen again?
I think, oh, Mr. Asa would like to take that?
We will be having another town hall in the spring, I believe in March. And at that point would be a great opportunity for you and your fellow students to come and speak or take the opportunity now to get some of it off your chest.
Okay, thank you. My last question is, so as a non-binary individual, someone who uses they/them pronouns and does not identify as the gender I was given at birth, someone who has changed my name, that part's not related, actually. I would like to mention that although there is a lot of sort of non-acceptance of my identity in regard, in regards to other students, I'm also having a specific problem with teachers and other members of the administration using incorrect pronouns, referring to me as a man, which I'm not, even though I've repeatedly corrected them. So what is the Board of Education, are you willing to do to make sure that you teach the teachers how best to teach the students by setting a proper example and using proper pronouns, proper gender orientation names, the like?
Thank you for that, River. Would anyone from the board like to address, it is River, correct?
Yes, that's my name.
I think that's a great name. Nick Asa, please.
So I'm not gonna lie, that's a tough question. I don't know the answer, but what I do know is that the district has hired somebody that is focused on diversity, equity and inclusion. And I would think that that would be a great starting point and a great point of contact for you and your peers to maybe have an open conversation. The Board of Education does not oversee the teachers. That is the administration's job. So we have, we have things that are within our purview. That doesn't mean that we don't support a cause or whatever, but going through the proper channels, I would recommend in any situation that you go through that hierarchy and now that we have this executive director for something that could be beneficial for you, I would recommend speaking to that individual.
Okay, could you tell me a little bit more about what the hierarchy to go through is? I'm sorry, I'm not very knowledgeable in the, you know, town politics situation.
Well, I think it would be, so you, you've spoken to your teachers, right? And, and you feel that you haven't gotten a response, then you would go to the next level in the administration at your own school.
Okay, so instead of focusing on it as a town policy, which I, like, I know that this happens in other schools, I should instead focus on what's happening in my own personal, like, kind of region? Is that what you're saying? I'm not, I'm sorry, that sounded a little bit.
No, no, no.
I'm genuinely asking because I know that this is a lot of, a lot of people are experiencing this issue, so how best could I work to address it in a way that helps all students and not just students who go to Ward like me?
So I'm gonna let other board members chime in, but one of the things that I will be sure to do is make sure that we discuss this with our superintendent and kind of see what the recommendations are and a path to chart forward.
Thank you, Mr. Asa. Ms. Gerber.
Yeah, hi, thanks for coming out here tonight. So I know Mr. Asa was talking about the, the kind of the chain of command, so. So normally in any school-related concerns, you would start with the teacher. And then in high school, perhaps for this topic, it might be helpful to talk to a guidance counselor or a dean, you know, for your house, just to kind of get some feedback from them and share your experiences. And perhaps even if you have other students who you know of at your school who have the same guidance counselor or in the same house, can talk to the same dean, you could perhaps set up a meeting to discuss this issue as a small group. So just specifically to that issue, you know, in your school. Then if perhaps you still feel like that's not quite getting you where you need to be, then you would go over the next chain of the ladder, which would be to the, oh gosh, they're not housemasters anymore, what are they?
House principal.
House principal, sorry. I can't remember the new term, so house principal. And then perhaps to the head principal as well, to Mr. Cavanna. So that's kind of slow up working within your school, but I think Mr. Asa also brings up a good point that we do have the new DEI director who perhaps might not be such a bad idea to, maybe when you talk to your guidance counselor, to say, would it be helpful for me to talk to the DEI director as well? Or at some point, or should we hold off and just deal with it in the school level and then perhaps work up? So that's just in terms of any issue, that would be my recommendation, but I do think that having the DEI come in at some point in the process would be helpful.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Rotelli.
Thank you for coming out tonight and speaking. I do want to let you know that on Election Day, our nurses arranged through the Health Department, because they work for the Health Department, a speaker that came in to help educate them and teach them. I can't, I wasn't there, but all things sort of in this wheelhouse because I know that it's something that's, you know, much more relevant today than it ever was when I was in school. It's not something we ever really heard about. And I would be happy to share that speaker with Superintendent Cummings because, you know, he puts together the professional development and I think that it's, it's something that all of our staff would be good, it would be good for everybody to be able to participate and learn. But just so you know, that did go through all the nurses for all of our public and private schools in Fairfield.
Okay, thank you. I, sorry, I have one small thing, and if none of you have the answers to this, that's okay, that just popped into my head. Also, again, as a non-binary student, some of the things that I fail to see in the school are representation for, you know, people like me. And while there are kind of facilities available for LGBTQIA+ people, I don't often see that they are really talked about by the administration and like, you know, endorsed. And further to the point, I don't see a lot of people who are like me as part of the LGBTQIA+ community teaching other people about this. So how, as someone, as previously stated, part of that community, can I help, you know, people to listen to me as I personally feel that, you know, cisgender heterosexual people teaching other cisgender heterosexual people about non-cisgender and non-heterosexual people is kind of the improper route to go through these things? So how, as someone who's gone through the experience of being transgender and being non-straight, could I, you know, give my experience to people, teachers who I could benefit personally from, you know, feeding them directly, what would help? And not just me, like other students, like how can I make sure that the students feel like they have a voice to their teachers in this sort of situation?
Yeah, thank, thank you for that. Ms. Jacobson, did you still have a, no, you're good?
No, I, no, I do.
Okay.
I was on the other question, but I can do that one and this one.
You're, you're good now?
No, I'm going to talk.
Oh, you're going to speak, okay.
I am.
Then please, and then, and then.
As long as it's okay with you, Chris.
I'm going to wrap it up. Well, this, this means I'm done, so.
Number one, just you are doing something right now. So you're raising awareness, you're making something known. I think we know, but just, this is something right here, right? Also, I've sat on a community organization called Fairfield Cares for a number of years and I know that a lot of people probably know about Fairfield Cares. We have always had a strong relationship with them, with our school district, but even a stronger relationship with them now. They work on a lot of things like substance abuse prevention, mental health, suicide prevention, but also matters pertaining to LGBTQ+ population as well, and also that being in terms of risk assessment as well. So that's a lot of mouthfuls, but I'm going to keep you in mind as we work forward and how we can elevate your voice through the collaboration with Fairfield Cares and how we can take some of the ideas that I think that you have and put them into action here. So I'll keep you in mind and you might hear from me, if that's okay with you.
That is perfectly all right.
Thank you very much.
Wonderful. Ms. Vitale, you will wrap this up.
Yep. River, thank you for sharing your concerns with us and I totally respect Mrs. Gerber advising you to follow the chain of command, but being that you brought this to us, for my own knowledge and I'm going to speak to the superintendent and our DEI coordinator just for, you know, our own education. So thank you for, you know, starting, starting this conversation with us.
So thank you for staying here tonight, River. You're going to, so now, you know, Mr. Whaley got homework, now you give the board homework. So, so good for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I go, I'd just like to say thank you guys for being out here and for listening to the community. It really means a lot to me to know that I have a voice in how I want to be taught as a student. Thank you, guys.
I was not trying to keep you for last, you know. And what's your name?
Kristen Ballavender.
Kristen?
So it was not my intention to be the closer tonight. Not, I'm not a good end game here, but I appreciate your time. I appreciate that it's very late and that you're all still here. I had notes and they've sort of taken an evolutionary journey this evening and changed as I've been listening to everything that's gone on here. I do wish that the young woman who spoke here before was still here because she gives me hope. I stand as a mom who has a child in crisis and it is exceptionally hard to be here and to be going through what our family is going through. And I told myself I was going to do that. And it takes a lot of bravery and my child does it every day when she steps in school. And so I'm doing it today for her and for my other kids who are also impacted. We heard the word normalcy and there are so many ways to give it to them. And I understand that you can't do anything about masks and that's fine, I get it. I can't fight that fight anymore, but you can fight it so many other ways. I was led into the building for the first time this week and my husband and I waited and we were in a situation and we sat outside the building because they didn't know what to do with us. And then we came inside the building and we counted eight signs that said, stay away from each other, go home if you're sick, mask required, mask required. There was one door that had three signs on it. My child fears that she's going to get sick every time she steps in the building, not of COVID. And she walks through these doors and she sees these signs and it's an echo chamber of fear. It is simple, we all know we're in a pandemic, we don't need 50 signs. Everybody knows, get rid of them. Let our schools look like schools and not medical buildings. Our kids need normalcy. I walked out of this meeting before because I got a phone call about a middle school basketball game that there was extreme excitement about going to tomorrow. And now we have to do sign-ups for it during homeroom in order to go. Homeroom doesn't happen for my child. We don't get into homeroom. And now, quote unquote, the only time I felt like a middle schooler in the two years I've been in middle school will be taken away because of COVID protocols and distancing guidelines. We have to do better for these kids. I can't sit silent and just email anymore because my kids and my family's happiness depends on it. So I'm just asking you to just look for ways that your hands aren't tied, to find a path to normalcy for our children. Thanks.
Thank you. Kristen, Kristen, I think you're a great closer. I think you did a great job and I appreciate. Would anyone from the board like to comment or, oh, please, Ms. Kelly?
Thank you for coming out and obviously that was very hard for you and I appreciate that. I agree with you on the, just the presence of, there's, I, I'm going to give you another example. I went to, I was subbing earlier in the year in a middle school and they still have, and we have them here, I think I saw them in here, if I'm not mistaken, I was also at Dwight earlier today, so I can't remember which school it was, just the lines on the floor like we used to have at the grocery store that no one followed anyway. And I actually did say something and I was like, can we just get rid, like, no one's following them, can we just get rid of them? And there was an agreement that, yeah, no one's really doing it, like, it's, it's good, like, it's, like, it's not bothering the kids because we're not, not that it's not being enforced, but it just kind of wasn't an issue anymore. And I'm like, but the fact that they're still there, though, is just advertising that it's just one more thing we need to worry about, I'm walking on the wrong side of the hallway. And that seems like an, to me, that seemed like an easy fix. Now, I don't want to say the funny part, but the answer that I got to why it couldn't be removed was that they had already been waxed over, so we had to wait until they come and do the cleaning to get them off the floor. That was the answer I was given, I'm just, I'm just saying. So, but I agree with you and I immediately thought the same thing. I felt like wherever we can squeeze in normalcy, whatever, we should be doing it. I had the same thoughts about, you know, there was a walkathon and they were still outside on a beautiful day and it was socially distanced and we can, you couldn't do the whole class, you had to do it in waves still. And I'm like, is that where we are in, at the time, it was September, October of 2021, that we're still sending the kids outdoors on a 70-degree day in waves? Now, my understanding, I believe, and someone up here who knows better than I, please, please correct me if I'm wrong, I think that those decisions are being made at the school building level. I don't know if those are district-wide decisions. Again, if I'm, that's my speculation right now, but I feel like anywhere, and I fully agree with you, the signs, it is just a concert, the kids are wearing their masks and that, and in high school, do they really need to be reminded that much to keep their masks on? Like, I, any, I agree with you. It's, it's overkill at this point and some of them, just like in the grocery store, aren't even being followed anyway. And it's just now, I do feel like there are some activities and events, we are instilling COVID protocols just so we can say we're doing something, it feels like. And that's, I agree with you and I have a problem and I really hope that that mentality changes. That is something we can do quickly and I agree with you.
I appreciate it, yeah. I think everything carries a message and then they know it. And they may, they may not say it, but it does. It's the plexiglass barriers times 100, like, they have messages.
Actually, I will say that I was working in the lunchroom for three months during that and the day that those plexiglass borders came down, the kids walked, I mean, the lunchroom was always crazy and it was not my favorite place in the world, I can admit that, but there was a diff, there was an air of just giddiness those first few days when they were gone. Just to, and in my opinion, totally my opinion, not a scientific opinion, they did nothing, okay? And the kids knew it, I feel like everybody knew it, but they were there, it was, I don't want to use the word theater because they were put there with the purpose of good intention, but there was just such, that simple act of removing the plexiglass made a noticeable change and it cost us nothing. And we should be looking to do that whenever we can.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you staying. Does anyone else in the audience have a question? How about in the back? Oh, I'm sorry, sir, I didn't see you. Looking at the lady in the back in the. Sure. And what's your name?
Nicole Stanton.
Hi, Nicole.
First of all, ooh, love, thank you for letting me speak. And the one thing, and really the main thing that I want to say right now is to thank the board. Each and every one of you stepped into a situation that was totally unforeseen. And really, I'm here to thank you for your service, your stewardship, and your hard work and patience. I know that you have not always been treated kindly or fairly by members of this community and for that, I apologize because you are appreciated, you are volunteers, and you are nothing if not hardworking. So as a parent here whose child has, children have been impacted by the pandemic, I do appreciate the public health guidance that has been put in place to protect our community. At the same time, I realize that some of it, it is time to let go, when it is time to let it go. But, and I know we have a small crowd here tonight, I think it's really dangerous when we take out our frustration on the pandemic, with the pandemic, on the people who are trying to implement public health measures. The pandemic sucks, masks are awful, none of this is easy, we are all suffering. But I just want you guys to know that I do appreciate you and I know that it's going to be a long time working our way out of this and I'm really grateful that we have the board that we have. Thank you.
Thank you for that on behalf of the Board of Education. Sir? Nicole, if I'd known you had such enough lifting message, you would have gone last, sorry.
I think I know most of you. I'm Bob Smoller, I'm the president of the Teachers Union and also a math teacher at Fairfield Ward. Just wanted to say a few things. I know the one young, young lady who came up about, talking about her mental health issues. And I would just offer, there are some things we can do before COVID to address students that are suffering like she is. For one, I do think we need to take a more proactive stance on how kids are consuming social media. That is something we could teach. They have not gotten any instruction on how to intake information and what to do with it. And I think that's something that can be done in the school district. I also would say that we need to take a look at how to tamp down the competitive nature of what's going on in school because that is creating an enormous amount of stress. I see it every day in the classroom with the kids that I teach and I know that there's some things we just can't do. I mean, getting into college is a reality of life, grades are a reality of life. I know my colleague John Whaley has been railing against that for a long time, but it's, it's gotten out of control a little bit and it's affecting the kids in a lot of different ways. Now, I don't know I have the answer, but it's something that I think if you are serious about addressing the stress issue, it's something that should be looked at. I did want to make one other comment about the Black and Latinx course. And I'm not, I'm a math teacher, I'm not that knowledgeable about social studies. I appreciate Ms. Maxine Cannelly's discussion about the content of the course and what it should include. But as a young person, I grew up in a relatively white community, in fact, an all-white community. I had the, took the same history courses that are being offered here today. And I can only tell you that I was not prepared for life coming out of school because I did not get perspectives of other people. And we have an opportunity with this Black and Latinx course to make available to our students a perspective that they might not otherwise seek out. And for many students in our high school, the only history course they will take is the one they were required to take. Most of our students are going to take one U.S. history course, they're not going to make a life out of it. Some will be very interested in it and pursue that topic. But, you know, there may be art kids that are interested in art, there might be kids who are interested in science and math. And so the only US, they'll take one US history course when they're in, in high school. And I think it's a real mistake of ours not to give them the opportunity to satisfy their graduation requirement by taking a course that would offer them a perspective different than they might otherwise experience in their life. And that will be one of the most valuable things that they take with them into college and their careers. And they're just not getting it living in this community. They don't get that perspective living in Fairfield, because we are just, we just don't have the diversity that exists in the real world in this community. So I would really encourage you strongly to make it eligible for graduation requirement. Because if that's the only course they're gonna take, let them take this and have some exposure to what other, other people and what other differences are experiencing. And maybe it'll open up their eyes a little bit, and open up their world a little bit, and cause them to think about life in a little bit different manner. I know it's a commitment, we have a commitment in the district to diversity and inclusion and equity. I think this is an important first step to embodying those goals. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Smoller. Ms. Maximinelli, would you like to? No, 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 no.
Sure, no, I'm happy to.
No, I'm not, no.
I talk to Jen all the time, I know how she feels.
No, I'm, I'm referring to the letter you were going to read.
Yeah.
Oh, it's all set. Oh, okay, wonderful.
I would give one point to, just one point, and Mr. Smoller, and this'll, you know, throw some administrators and guidance counselors into a tizzy. There's, because of the way we do humanities and graduation, there's no reason that students couldn't take this course in addition in order to fulfill their graduation requirement. Because we are required, they are required to take three and a half years. One has to be the US history course, a half year has to be civics. What the other two courses are is completely up to the student. Do we schedule them into Global Nine? Yes. Do we schedule them into Global 10 or AP Modern European History? Yes. They, a student could opt to not do that. So I just want to throw that out there, that it's, you know, if, the challenge has been put before us by staff to have this be a course that can fulfill a graduation requirement, it can.
Yeah, I don't think that's wildly known, and.
I'm happy to publicize that more, given the position I've been put in due to my rather public stance. But I, I, look, I think we need a thorough overhaul, it is imminent. It's, you know, this, this has been eye-opening for so many people, people who hadn't thought there were issues or learning. And I think that building, those building blocks are gonna be invaluable for the discussion we end up having, having. But I do want to point that out there, in terms of graduation requirement, it absolutely could fulfill that.
I would just say to you that we are at the forefront of our inroads into the diversity, into really actualizing diversity, inclusion, and equity in our school district. And these early steps that we take will determine our momentum, or lack thereof, as we head into this, into this area. And so I, I think this is a very key first step, just as, it was a token first step renaming the house masters, house principals. But it was a meaningful step for our students. And I think this is another key first step to having students have access to and know that I can fulfill my US history graduation requirement by taking a course where I hear about different perspectives than I normally hear. And I think, quite honestly, having gone through this myself, I think it will enrich them as they head into their college experience and also as they head into their careers. I don't need to say any more of that.
Thank, thank you. Ms. Jacobson, did you have anything?
I was just gonna reiterate that it can fulfill a graduation requirement, so Jen already covered that, so thank you.
Okay. Ms. Vitale?
And I, again, just wanted to reiterate that I think that this will fulfill, this is a course in US history, in my opinion. It covers a lot of events that I think are very important that our students learn. And I think it's valuable as they're going out into a global society and a global economy that it provides perspectives that will serve them well. And just understanding our past, and more importantly, what's happening in our world today. And we talked about mental health. I think that we really didn't touch upon just current events, aside from the pandemic, that are obviously affecting our youth. And we, we've heard in comments that we've heard today, we've seen it in walkouts, we've seen it in social media. So I support the work that has been done by staff and I'm look forward to the conversation continuing.
Just to your point also, and this is something that Ms. Maximinelli said earlier. It is true that an event can take place, like the January 6th insurrection. But depending on where you're getting your news, you will get a very different view of what happened. And the same can be true, said true of US history. Yes, there are events that took place. But depending on who you're hearing about those events from, you will get a very different sense of what happened. And I, I feel very strongly that this is a great course to approve. And I'm getting the sense that the board will approve the course. I think equally, if a student is not going to take a lot of history in their, in the course of their studies at, in high school here in our district, having the ability to meet their graduation requirement, the US history requirement, with this course and the rich perspectives it will offer is critical to expanding their horizons. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly?
I actually, I'm not touching the, that class right now, because it's, I don't think I can say anything that hasn't been said already.
Yeah.
But earlier, you just said something about kids consuming too much social media. And I have been, not on this board I haven't said it, because I haven't been here very long, but I have had conversations in the community with how, I have very strong opinions about how I personally don't think there's enough. I don't like that health in middle school is only one. I think it should be all year round. I think those are ages, there's a lot of material that can be covered there, these kids, especially now. I know we're working through potential changes to the middle school schedule. And I personally would love to see health be offered all year round. Because I think a lot of, a lot of conversations, a lot of education, pertinent, current event conversations can be taking place during, during these time periods. And I think we could and should be covering a lot more than what we squeeze into one.
I will, I will just tell you that the number one source of disruption in the schools today, the number one source of loss of instruction, even absenteeism, is social media. Getting kids' attentions in class is incredibly difficult, because they are absolutely glued to their phones. And, you know, we obviously take as teachers, you know, very strong steps to have them put their phones away. We have, we have shoe racks that we have them putting in and everything else. But it's, they, they definitely need some instruction on how to use this tool, because it's, it's, it's become a very all-encompassing factor in their lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to make a comment, question? Not you, Mr. Smoller. Yes, yes, ma'am, yes, please.
I'm Kristen Franklin.
Yes, this is, this is the last.
I don't have a statement, I actually wasn't gonna speak, but I just wanted to support Kristen's comments about the school. I, the school environments, I have, I stepped up to sub last year to help out. And last week was the first time I've gone into a class, a school this year. What I find is there's a lot of inconsistency with these policies. As you, I think Chrissy mentioned, it seems to be up to the school. I see differences even classroom to classroom. And just as far as those signs go, I mean, we had snack time as first graders. They have to spread out, they go to their snack spots. So they're all around the floor and they're six feet apart. And I was playing a little lesson for them, and I asked them a question. And a kid spoke up and tried to answer, and somebody else said, "Susie, we're not allowed to talk during snack time because our masks are off." I mean, these kids are terrified, and we're creating this culture of fear. You know, there's a strip of tape by my desk, and I, you know, I couldn't hear a kid that came up to talk to me because of the mask. I said, "Come here, come." Well, I, I can't come to the teacher area, I can't come pa, so these are the things that I see just anecdotally that I, I would agree that we need to try to address.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Well, listen, this is the end of the comment section. I very much appreciate everyone who is here, appreciate everyone watching at home. I just want to say, first off, thank you for letting me moderate the conversation. I'm truly humbled by the depth, the breadth, and the compassion of the subjects that you all addressed tonight. It's, it is, it's humbling, and I was happy to be a part of it. And Ms. Vitale, I yield the, I yield the meeting back to the chairman.
Thank you very miss, very much, Mr. DeWitt, for, for joining us tonight. And once again, doing an exemplary job of moderating. Appreciate the help and the support. Thank you to those members of the public that stayed to the end and for, for just sharing your thoughts to us. It was really nice to be able to have a dialogue with you in this, this format. And I look forward to continuing the discussion in March, if not sooner. And with that, I motion to adjourn. Mr. Asel, second by Mr. Peterson, all in favor, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Literally the whole time.
That's so great, I love that.
Condition, see what's happened to me?
That's so funny. Honestly, it just gave me something to smile at, because I was like, I was just sitting here, I was like, you know.